Is the um.
No, I don't think anyone's coming in person except the um.
The board, I hope.
The owner of the uh. I can uh.
Oh.
Yeah.
Are you controlling that?
No.
He is. Oh, so you want to put up, go on the Zoom just without my audio to.
I'm on Zoom too. I was gonna go first and try to put anything up that I need to, but I'm hoping the applicant, I was gonna make him co-host. So he can run it.
Good evening, Ron and Sarah.
Hi.
Can you hear us?
How's it going?
Good. Can you hear us?
Perfectly. Is this, is this your first meeting in that room?
Yeah, we're uh.
We're not posted. We're not posted. We're not on the calendar. I'm on August, sorry.
You're on because I just did the Zoom link.
I just uh. Yeah, what day of the week are we?
I know, right? It's Monday, the twenty-sixth of September.
Six. Uh, we are on the calendar.
Recording in progress.
Alright, I'm gonna go.
I'm gonna go without your um audio. You gotta turn the audio.
Yeah, just mute yourself and then you're good.
No, it's not muted. You have to say um, go to the up layer there. Say.
On your, on your own computer? Is, is that a Mac?
We have your audio.
Yeah.
Did you figure it out? Are you uh? When muted?
Yeah, just when you call in, you can say you're gonna call in by the phone. That's the way I usually do it. Well. You get the big room.
Wow, this is fancy dancing.
It's very scary because you see two of yourself.
Just, hi.
Hi.
You are uh.
Forty-seventh Pleasant Street.
And is Brian gonna present?
I hope so. Yeah, he told me he was coming.
Right.
Probably coming here.
Maybe he's doing it over the phone at Zoom. I don't know. He told me he and the engineer were gonna present.
Hoping that's soon, right?
Here to see whatever he has to say.
So applicant and then these are two for the next.
I can make up this now.
So take one of each.
I added a few to both of them, so.
So this is, this is the Pleasant Street.
She's not?
New pack thing and then this.
Okay, do you know? Do we need the whole thing?
Oh, okay.
What's going on? Lot of reading.
And you have the cricket article too? I answered every copy of those.
Yeah, so Ryan, she.
Unless they're here.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know what it is, but it is. I feel like Megan at the moment.
So we have technicians here to help us too.
This is being screened live on channel sixteen. So. We'll put makeup on.
I always have makeup on.
You have makeup on?
So did you get my message at one of each of these for you? This is for tonight and these three, one of each for next meeting. So at least you go home with some paper to read.
This is very confusing, Ron.
So this is the Pleasant Street paper application that we'll be discussing.
Okay.
This is the um H two thing on.
Your videos.
The Bojor, the Manchester Marine, one of the, that will be something next meeting when we come with the town. Application for parking spots at the Burnout. Which will be taken back also next week. Okay. Okay, so those, just the ones that come next, but.
Do you read copies of the agenda for today?
I have one if you wanna make copies. Two pages, but I don't think the second.
I have one, but I will go.
Like real TV?
Being screened live.
I don't know. What side is my good side? Alright, side. Let's uh.
Luckily, we can't see ourselves.
We can't. We can just see Ron.
Right now, but. Now.
We have old fashioned envelopes down there again. Oh, is this down there?
No.
What's down there? Old stuff. Okay. So I just saw Saint Pierre and I thought it was um the, the chapter ninety-one stuff. Yeah, that's that.
Yeah, so take one of each. This is for our next meeting.
Okay.
And then this one is for tonight.
This one.
This first package is, is this man's application for the um.
Oh, that's.
Pleasant Street and then this Saint Pierre one, Saint Pierre two, and then the towns applying for the Burnout parking spot. So those are all public here and this is for next.
Do you have an extra copy of the new bylaws by any chance?
Downstairs.
They're not there. I didn't know you had grabbed an extra copy by any chance.
No.
I had to ask the town clerk. Yeah, okay. Sarah said they were down there last week and I forgot to grab one and then I went to grab it now and it wasn't there. Um. Yeah, it wasn't there a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, so you. I seem to only have the November changes. We just, so I'm.
Oh, no, and that's a little gripe of mine because I put it in, tried to put it in the folder like four times. And we've asked like a thousand times.
Well, here's.
To have a copy of the agenda in our folders. Never, never, ever. I have one. Wow. I printed it out. But I had to go looking for it. I mean, it doesn't really, it shouldn't. So. Secret of um.
For just reading for a while.
Oh, yourselves now. I'm not having my sound on Zoom. How do I do that, Sarah?
So you sign in with uh, with your, with your own phone? And then just say no or um. Don't use a computer audio.
I can hear you, Christina, fine.
Yeah, but she's.
I just like to see who's there. I could just look at myself right now. I'd just have to see who's in the meeting. Yep. I like to be omnipresent. Um, no, 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 no. I reject that. That's what you think that is.
It's power there. She did add some cords. Should run.
Without video.
With, yeah, John, without phone, without audio. You know what I hate is I hate going back and looking at the videos to see things and then you see your face.
So it didn't give me the option.
Well, um.
Oh, you have to click on.
Or then it go to the audio options on the lower with your, where you mute. And then there's an up, little arrow and one of the options is to shut off, shut up the computer audio.
Leave computer audio.
Just remember, next time you go on Zoom, you have to turn that back on. Okay. Thank you. Well, I think it remembers the last settings that you had. So. You're old school.
Oh, should I go ahead without saying?
I think we can.
Is she coming? Is Gary not coming again? We might have to discuss this on a topic on the agenda, reasonably anticipated. I mean, I have a problem with someone bringing my own. To town meetings, not showing up for meetings.
Okay. I have six thirty-two. I'd like to welcome everyone to the hybrid planning board meeting. It's our first hybrid meeting, so bear with us if there's technical difficulty. Right now, I'd like to take a call to order by doing a roll call. Ms. Craven.
Sure.
You know?
Here.
Foley.
Yeah.
Gilbert is not here. Mr. Only, I'm here. And Mr. Menny is not with us.
Are we expecting?
I, she wasn't coming.
Okay.
So it looks like we have a forum tonight. I'd like to rely on all board members and guests to be recognized by the chair if they wish to speak. This meeting is being recorded. First item on the agenda is, I mean, acknowledgement of receipt of correspondence. We have an. I am on the letter from eight fourteen. Don't know of any others.
Yep, Dale here.
Yeah.
Okay.
At this time, I allow any public comments for items not on the agenda with a limited time. If anybody from the public would like to speak. Okay, first item is the curb cut at five A Arbella Street. I wasn't here last meeting, but I understand there was a sidewalk and the board asked for a complete application. That was received. And are there any comments from the board on the curb time? Go ahead, Sarah.
So I um, we, we, it came up a little bit just in conversation at our workshop and I went back and Christina had asked about whether or not it was taking parking spaces for school kids and I noted, so I went back and I looked and whether it was too close to the intersection. And it's quite a ways from the intersection. Um, uh, maybe, I didn't measure it, but it's several houses, maybe three or four house from the intersection. And the um, parking is, parking is posted there. No parking seven to eight AM. And so it looks to me like it has been posted to dissuade school parking. Whether that works or not is, of course, I'm, I'm not there at that time. So those two issues I thought were valid issues, but I at least satisfied myself. And then we had not talked about those previously and I satisfied myself that I was comfortable with that. That said, I do also agree that um. It's a bit of a. Subverting of the special permit for the, or the ADU process that, or whatever happened there to get that. Because it was not shown, the construction hasn't changed, but the access has changed and it could have easily been anticipated. So though, I don't think we can do anything about it now, but I think in the future, it would be hubus if we feel strongly that, that the single driveway is the single driveway for the two units that we note that in an approval. So I think it's okay and I will vote for it, but I had those thoughts and I could go back and look.
Thank you.
So my initial, I mean, the application is here again. It's not checked off that it's in the water resource overlay district. So I, after two meetings, I don't understand why that's still not, to me, it's not completed. And I feel like this is subverting the process. If they went in front of the ZVA and said they had sufficient parking and the conversation was that there is enough parking, why are they coming now? So I feel like if they don't have enough parking, that initial permit should go back because something is being avoided. There is an oversight that's not being. We're saying that we don't have any jurisdiction. We just have jurisdiction on the curb. So then give it back to the people that do have jurisdiction who gave the special permit. Um, or we do have jurisdiction. I, I think we've already said we don't want people doing this going forward. So what are we doing to stop it? We say we have the special permit process and we have controls over it. So are we okay with every addition, every ADU that comes in front of us getting a second curb cut? We haven't turned one down and what is the criteria that we would turn one down? I'm, I am concerned. We're saying no, never. So I'm not convinced. I think this is a big ask and if they had this ask, it should have been at the ZVA, not at our level. And the water.
This is, this is not, excuse me, Ron, may I point something out? This is not an ADU. It's a two-family home.
Regardless of what it is.
We're speaking.
Well.
Is it two?
I have no idea.
No, this is, that was Dale speaking.
Regardless of what, even then, if it's a two-family, then the plans that went in front of the ZVA did not indicate this, so. I, I don't know.
I think we're related to the curb cut rules for us, you know, safety and drainage. I don't know about this. What you're saying, we have served you.
Would the ZVA's decision been any different?
I don't know.
I, was the ZVA contacted?
I don't know. Sue, do you have any more information on this? To Brown?
I don't know what you're asking for information on. Can you be more specific?
So I, I think the um, the application that the ZVA approved with the special permit is different than what the application is in front of us. Because a driveway has been added after approval. So was the ZVA, did this go back to the ZVA for review?
It doesn't go back to the ZVA. The ZVA is not in charge of curb cuts. They permitted a two-family building. That was their purview. And they per, permitted the two-family building.
Yeah, I'm not, no, I'm not addressing the curb cut. I'm addressing the driveway. It's my understanding that the ZVA permitted this based on enough sufficient parking for the two family. They didn't need additional parking. So I'm not sure what's changed. We're taking away an off-street.
Hi, hi, Ron Athanas here. What's, what seems to be the problem? We went before your board, a, a planning board. We did everything to the letter, okay? And then the zoning board of appeal, everything to the letter. What's the problem here? It's a two-family house. Where do you expect us to park the vehicles? And that car park was approved. Okay, it's in the plans. Okay.
Okay, could you just identify yourself for the record?
No, I said Ron Athanas here.
An address?
Address, five Arbella Street, Manchester.
Yeah, I think our purview was just for.
I mean, I did everything possible that I could possibly, we, we, we went every single letter to the law on both those permits. Wha, what do you want from us?
So, to me, the parking was not in the initial plan and.
Yes, it was, ma'am. Yes, it was, ma'am.
Hold on, Mr. Athanas.
Look at the plan. It was right in the parking area.
I've actually asked for the plan that the ZVA approved. It hasn't been forthcoming to me. I've seen the plan that was for the driveway. What I've asked for is what the ZVA approved the two family for and that plan included sufficient parking for the two family. So if you have a problem with your parking now, that wasn't what.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. Yes.
Ron.
Yeah.
Ron, this is, Ron, this is two.
Yeah.
That plan has been in SharePoint for over a week.
I can put it up. The ZVA one?
Thank you.
For over a week.
Yeah.
Hold on, we're, we're trying to get the plan up on screen.
I mean, I just want a, an up and down vote on this.
Understood, Mr. Athanas. Understood. We're just working.
Thank you, sir.
We're just working. Give us a minute.
Okay, thank you. I mean, these.
Oh, can you just enable me? Sorry. Okay. So I believe this is the plan for, sorry. Two thousand twenty, this is in SharePoint. August nineteenth, twenty twenty. This is the site plan and it shows the infiltration details.
Yeah, two of them.
In the infiltr, the, I believe, the infiltration.
Yeah.
Ron, I see right here the, can you?
I think we approved these.
That's correct.
So this is the question. This is where the new, let's see where my cursor is.
Yeah.
Um, I believe this is where the new curb cut is and the new gravel. So this tree here and this tree here have been removed at the lead.
That's correct.
So the Christina is correct that the plan of at least August nineteen, twenty twenty does not show the um, the, the proposed second curb cut. It does, however, show the infiltration as well as the water, the pervious surface, I believe is calculated on this. And this was for.
So I was, was there an updated plan last meeting? I was not.
Um, yeah.
Is there an updated plan soon?
Yeah. All right.
Yes, there is an updated plan.
Yeah, I can find it.
While we're waiting, Ms. Jakes, you have a comment?
Um, I do have a question. Thank Becky Jakes, twenty-two Forster Road. And I, I, I see that that, that was a fairly large tree. Has the tree been removed? And was there a tree hearing on that tree if it had been removed?
We're not aware of that. Boys not aware.
My question, this is the um.
Thank you.
The proposed curb cut. And this is, this gravel here is in place already.
Okay.
But the sidewalk curb cut has not been completed.
What's the date on this plan?
This is one we looked at the other day. This is August nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Christina, is it satisfying or? Comment?
So I would, I would share Christine's concerns about the process. Um, I guess looking at what we have, I, I would like to know if the proper procedures to Becky's point were done for the tree. And since there's already a curb cut there, I would like to see this curb cut be smaller. Um. It's a very small side street and having two relatively large curb cuts is a lot for one lot. I don't have the exact dimensions on me what the width is there. I can't see.
Fifteen feet is, I believe it's, it's noted right here.
Um, you know, maybe that could get down to twelve or something. But, but could you, could you walk us through the tree removal that was done prior to applying for a curb cut? To the applicant?
Tree was diseased. Sir Athanas, you have any comment on the tree removal?
Yes. Yeah.
The tree was removed before we put the addition.
No. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Ron Athanas, the tree was a diseased tree and it was removed way before we put in for the addition or the two family. Okay? And we can reduce that cut to twelve feet. That's fine with us.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Gamm, do you have a comment on the?
Uh, just a couple of things. Um, the, the tree was removed long before this curb cut application. I know it's shown on the plan. I'm not a hundred percent sure. I assume that we removed it, but it wa, it was gone long ago before, if this is part of Becky's question, before the current tree policy, but it would have, if we removed it, it definitely had a hearing or at least Tom Henderson viewed it to confirm that it was diseased, but I can check the records on that and follow up with you, Becky, directly or the board if they want. Um, and then the only other thing that I'll just say about the, the proposed width, yeah, we, I have talked to Ron quite a while about this. Uh, and yeah, that's why he came back before the board. He actually came to DPW first to discuss the curb cut, the second curb cut. And one of the considerations here for, at least for the town perspective and DPW perspective is the sidewalk and the condition of the sidewalk for the roadway. And that was something that I discussed with other board members at the site meeting a couple of weeks ago. So I just want to say that that has also been a part of this process.
And it really is no curb there, correct? It's just kind of a.
Yes, that's correct.
I'm walking straight to the school.
It is, okay. Okay, Sarah Melish, you have a comment on this?
Yes, when this came before the ZVA, we were very concerned about the parking situation and the lack of green space. And if this had come before us, we would not have approved that second parking. There's no green space left on this lot.
Yes, there is. It's fifty-three percent.
Okay, let's not have any backwards ones. Um, okay.
Okay, I apologize for that.
Yes, we're just um.
I have one more comment.
Any other comments from anyone else? Go ahead, Mary.
Uh, though. A concern I would have is reducing the width is where are the cars gonna be able to turn around? This is a walking route to school and if you've got this additional curb cut backing out onto the street, that's safety concern. So I would like to see how the car could turn around and I don't see it.
Now, is that a bylaw? I mean, I, I, I mean, every driveway in Manchester, the cars have to turn around in? Uh, that's a question.
It is in the bylaws. It is in the bylaws.
So.
It is not.
Okay.
I believe that they wanted a wide turnaround on new construction. I don't know if yours is new construction, no.
Absolutely, geez.
So.
Which is my concern. Which is my concern, right? So this went in front of the ZVA. It was new construction. They approved the plan. This is not what they approved.
That, yes, it was. Yes, it was. You know, there's, there's driveways on this street that cars can't turn around.
Understood.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
I mean, this is the general conversation that we've been having about ADUs and extra parking and parking spots and what the unintended consequences are, and when will we say no? I, you know, the other one that was maybe on Herald Street, not as congested, I can see maybe saying yes, but this is a concern where more ADUs and more two families in this district are gonna go. I mean, we're not gonna have any streets left. We're not gonna have any curb. I mean, unfortunately, as much as people say we don't have cars, here we go. We do.
Chuck, you see any safety concern with, with this driveway as design?
Well, certainly, uh, backing out is not ideal. However, uh, one of the considerations that, you know, was also an improved condition is once we, and, you know, I've talked to Ron, he's okay with waiting until the spring when this work is scheduled uh, for the actual curb cut to be in place, but by virtue of moving the sidewalk out, which is what we're gonna have to do to match the sidewalk up ahead, um, you know, there'll be more distance between the car parked and, you know, people coming up. I will say the, the sidewalk is also on the, you know, there, there's no parked cars in front of or blocking the pedestrians from the, um, you know, where he's trying to turn in and out. So, you know, it's not ideal, but it's also not the worst thing that's ever happened, or, you know, certainly there's other places in Manchester on busy streets in the school zone that, you know, have pull-in, pull-out. So it's kind of, it's, it's not, it's not unique in that regard.
This is a, and this is a one-way street, I might add.
Understood.
Okay, thank.
Yeah. Um, a question to Sarah, because I, I, Sarah Melish, I, I'm trying to understand this, what feels like a mismatch in terms of what the ZVA reviewed and the expectations, uh, or what was presented at that time for parking arrangements, knowing that this was going to be a two-family and what is coming now, because it does seem like there's a, a kind of disjoint that's happening in the process when we're seeing things that are effectively after the fact. Um, as far as the backing out, just before I ask Sarah, as far as the backing out, you know, our traditional development pattern has, um, houses on small lots, uh, that were not designed around cars, and so I think that the backing out is, um, while, while reducing the number of curb cuts is important for safety, I think that backing out is, um, sort of part and parcel with our development patterns, um, and comes expensive not backing out is creating more, um, train, you know, converting more open space or green space to parking area, impervious or not. But Sarah Melish, could, could you please say more about what the application presented at that time and what the ZVA approved? Because that might help me understand, uh, what, what was supposed to be permitted for this. I don't think we have the plan that shows what the ZVA approved.
Right, so that that area where they're now proposing the new parking was all landscaping, and that was basically the only landscaping on the lot. And we, we looked at the driveway going down to the new garage and had concerns, um, had concerns about coverage, had concerns about drainage. Um, that if, if, if the second driveway is put in gravel, I assume that's pervious gravel, you still have no green space. It's all, all structure and driveways.
Ma'am, there's green space.
Mr. Athanas.
Hundred, the length of that lot all the way down. Yes.
Please be recognized by the board if you wish to speak.
Okay.
Can't have any back and forth.
Okay.
Then, answer your question.
Yes, I, I don't think we're seeing that plan, though. I mean, we're seeing a site plan that shows the drainage improvements. We're not showing, seeing a plan that shows. Unless that's it, is this what you were reading there?
No, the ZVA was approved before that drainage piece.
Okay.
Oh, you did not approve them.
She didn't approve the impervious.
It came in front of us.
Oh, okay, so the planning board reviews.
We approved.
We approved that prior to a driveway.
Okay.
And so I just have one question, and maybe someone else, Ron, you could answer this one. So the drainage on the driveway, is that, okay, the car's gonna be on top of it and parking?
Yeah, I don't think it's an issue. Chuck? I think it's capable for H twenty loading, as it says.
Yeah, I can imagine that'll be an issue for one car.
Um, it's a question for Sue Brown. Um, in terms of the complete streets, the safe streets study, uh, was Arbella Street included in that, and is there, uh, recommendations for Arbella, given that it's, uh, you know, a hundred, a hundred yards from the entrance to the school? Any specific Arbella Street, uh, recommendations?
Thanks, Sarah. The, um, Arbella Street was not a part of the complete streets report. Um, and I, and I was not part of the, um, Safe Roots to School study, so I, I'm, I'm sorry, I can't answer your question, and I don't know if Nate or if Chuck was involved in the complete streets.
Uh, well, I just said that, this is Chuck, the complete streets didn't address anything on Arbella Street. The Safe Roots to School, um, I, I wa- I wasn't a part of that project either. However, it does seem to me that the Safe Roots to School, like, was somewhat completed up above this, like going towards the cemetery, because that's where they had, they do have ADA, uh, handicap ramps and concrete panels, sidewalk. But I, for whatever reason, they stopped there, I think, because they had utility conflicts to continue that, so I'm not sure what the next steps were supposed to be for that.
The Safe Roots to Schools was not a Pleasant Street Extension, uh, work that was part of the high school project and part of the site plan review that had people, the, the crosswalk go from the side of the cemetery across there, there's a crosswalk up at the, the cemetery gate, there's two gates, and that, the crosswalk was moved there to try to get people to not cross at the corner. And the pavement was actually, there was actually sidewalk along the cemetery, uh, along Pleasant Street Extension on both sides, and we removed the sidewalk on the cemetery side. So it wasn't, it was part of the high school project for site plan review, but not Safe Roots to School, or whatever that study was.
Yeah, so my understanding is that that got built, though, so I, I don't understand why they wouldn't have done anything on Arbella Street if, if there was something to be done from that perspective.
Yeah, it was part of the high school project, anyway. Site plan.
I think we. I know, I'm understood. I'm saying that the Safe Roots to School, like, all the, all of that work got done separately than the high school, like further down towards the elementary and, uh, in front of the high school itself, so, and crossing to Vine Street, like, all of those improvements were part of the Safe Roots to School. So it's my understanding, but you might know more.
Okay.
I just have one follow-up to the driveway, like, like technical part, like, so I guess you're saying it actually can drain, but the reason that we have this particular bylaw is because it's in the water resource over, right? So the original plan had it on grass, and now it's on a driveway, and so now cars, salt, everything is now even more exposed into the ground. Am I not reading this into it? Like, I mean, we're not, I mean, we have a major contamination issue feet away, so we're just saying, hey. We did approve it. We didn't approve it on top of a driveway.
So what, I have a, I'd like to make a motion, actually. Try to break through this. I'd like to move, move that we approve this driveway subject to two conditions. The first is that the actual curb cut be no more than twelve feet wide, and second, that the plan be endorsed by the, as long as it feels of the change in their approval site plan.
And if they don't? My recommendation was to have them send it back, so I'm okay with that. I second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, is there any discussion?
Just to, um, may I, just to respond to your questions, Christine, about the, um, drainage, from what I read of the site plan, um, it's common for those, uh, water storage chambers to go under paved areas, pervious or impervious, and so I, uh, the site plan demonstrates that there's no, I don't believe there's a material difference. They, they met the requirements for the drainage. Doesn't get away from the open space and the curb cut issue that you're concerned about, but as far as treating the drainage and capturing it.
I don't think it's treating this, though, right?
It's, I, if typically those chambers are storing it and then potentially fil- filtering it through the soil if there is capacity in the soil.
There's no soil, right?
Well, there's still subgrade, so I think the drainage is not the issue here, because the, the material, the site plan demonstrates that they've installed these chambers and that they've met the drainage requirements. So I don't think that's the concern. I think the concern is how many curb cuts and, you know, whether the ZVA approved.
So that's a good point. Do we have as does that they were installed?
No, but I don't think our reg, I don't believe that our regulations are requiring as.
I mean, we, we're supposed, we can check up on them.
Well, we had a motion, and it's been seconded. Uh, is there any discussion on the motion?
My only, my only concern with that is we're not addressing the safety issue, which I think backing out on a busy, well-traveled sidewalk with kids and bikes and people dropping off is a concern, but.
Not supposed to drop.
Have to weigh that.
Uh, as I said before, I was inclined to approve this, and I, after this discussion, I'm actually not inclined to approve it. I think we're for the, all the reasons we've discussed, so, um, I kind of feel like we're advocating. I, I like your idea, but I think we're kind of advocating.
Kicking the can?
We're, we're, we're advocating to the ZVA to do our job, which is to approve curb cuts.
I think there is a change in the site plan, ZVA site plan. I think they should weigh in.
Yeah, but we've already seen the stamp on our jurisdiction to say, oh, we're fine with the safety, we're fine with the drainage, we're fine with the.
Sure, sure.
Pervious surface, so they wouldn't have much left to hang their hat on, right? Well, Sarah, so they wouldn't approve this.
Well, that's her opinion, so, okay.
I'm happy to, I think we know where my straw would go, so we could take a straw vote.
Well, on the motion, uh.
May I ask a question before the vote? This is Mike Athanas, Five Arbella. On the safety, on the safety and concerns about dropping off and pickup on Arbella Street for the schools, they are not allowed to drop and pick off on Arbella Street. They're not supposed to. They do every day, and I know Ms. Creighton was on the board back with the school building, and that was part of the, um, agreement with the town that, that students were really not supposed to be picked up or dropped off on Arbella Street. And there's signs that state that. No standing parking, no drop-off or pickoff. So for safety reasons, there's really a, this is a busy street from seven in the morning till about seven forty-five and two fifteen to two thirty.
Okay, thank you. On the motion, uh, any more discussion? Take a roll call vote. Um, Ms. Tenny.
Yeah, I'm, so Sarah, like, kind of had some discussions.
So I think the motion is, if I can state the motion, is to approve it with a twelve-foot-wide curb cut, subject to, uh, remanding it back to the ZVA for, uh, my approval of the site plan, a modified site plan.
So, a yes vote means you're approving the driveway based on those two conditions.
Right. My concern is, Mary had a very good point. Does the ZVA have any grounds not to deny it soon? That's.
There's no choice.
So we have a choice now, too, though. So if it is our choice, um, I think, can I remove my second? Someone else can second, because I think. I'm thinking that we should vote it ourselves. I'm respect thinking, man. I'll vote first. I'm ready to voting now.
Just put Ms. Sterling.
Yes.
Ms. Tenny?
No.
No. No.
And the chair votes yes. The, the motion fails.
Okay, so I'm gonna move that we deny the curb cut for Five Arbella Street.
There a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
So would this go back, if the ZVA did take this up and approve the, the modification to the bylaw, would we approve the curb cut?
No.
Not sure.
I'm sorry, modification to the site plan.
Something, I think the process would be more strict, would be in the right order. I, I, I'm not gonna project what we would do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we need to. I mean, this is two year, within two, the last two years, this is, this was done, and it seems kind of counter to the intent.
I guess I just wanted, it would be nice to give some direction to the applicant, as to what we should do at this point.
I think the applicant. I'm not gonna give, I don't think that's our role.
Any further discussion on the motion to deny the curb cut? Okay, Ms. Foley?
So the motion is to deny, yes. Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Chair votes no. Curb cuts denied. I mean. Okay, moving on to the next subject. Proposed for Board of Health Regulations. So, uh, Peter, tell me if I got this wrong, but I'll just read a little preamble here, um. Peter Colaruso, representing the Board of Health, is presenting proposed drinking water regulations. The proposed regulations were placed in your package. And he, he said the Board of Health, a sample regulation, last fall. The Board of Health had a meeting a few weeks ago, voted to consider advancing the draft regulations, and asked member Peter Colaruso to seek input from various boards and committees, including the Planning Board, CONCOM, Select Board, et cetera. This is where the process stands. After gathering input, the Board of Health will further review the proposed regulations and decide whether they wish to proceed with possibly adopting them. If they wish to do so, they will need to hold at least one formal public hearing on the regulations before voting whether to adopt. This process may take many months to complete and probably will include multiple drafts. Here, did I get that right?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, Peter, so you have the floor.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to be with you, uh, this evening. Uh, I, I'm here to solicit your input and your help in writing, um, this policy. Uh, the policy is, the intent of the policy is to protect our drinking water from contamination and/or interruption of flow. Um, I, I think we, we all agree that, uh, water supply is a zero, zero-sum game. You can't make water, so it behooves us to, um, contain, to keep as much as we can and as good a shape as it is. Um, this regulation will not prevent construction. What this regulation requires or will require is if you are in a situation, if the project is in a situation where it may interrupt the water flow or contaminate the drinking water, that the builder must use the most advanced technology available to avoid, um, these situations. We have been doing this for years on the septic systems. We routinely, um, approve non, uh, for non-conforming systems, the best available technology, rather than obviously not allowing any system at all. So it's pretty standard. I cannot take your comments now. I think it would be inappropriate for me to try to take your comments back to the board members. So I would ask, uh, you to send your comments pro or con in writing to the Board of Health. Remember, our per, our, uh, responsibility here is strictly health. So any comments must relate to the health issue. We don't have any authority for any other situation. Drainage, you mentioned drainage, uh, drainage is, is in this, in the, uh, country right now, a big hot topic. As you know, the P, there's a lot of PFAs and all kinds of, um, construction material, because they extend the life. Construction material because they extend the life of these materials. And they routinely wash off of roofs, they wash off of parking lots. Siding, replacement windows, paints. On a new project, and this only refers to new projects now over twenty-five hundred square feet. We would ask for a drainage system that collects. The runoff and removes it safely from the site. We all know that this these contaminants can. Eventually go through all of the soil and sand and make it into the water source. So that is probably going to be more expensive. But it's better than. Contaminating and having to. DPW have to worry about. Additional treatments or whatever. The bigger issue that's totally out of our control, but. I think everyone's probably aware of is the EPA on September. Six. Announced a notice of federal regulation and rulemaking. And they will be taking comments until. October. There's two PFAs that we currently are testing for. I don't know if they are in. The mix that we test or not. Hopefully, they're not. Two of them have been called health hazards since two thousand and sixteen. And this required this new proposal, which they think will go into effect the end of this year. Will classify those two contaminants as hazardous materials. Which would require. An environmental site assessment report on any construction. Where there is a potential for PFAs and if there are PFAs, then there'll be no construction there until it's cleaned up. Now that rule may change or may be modified between now and the end of December. But given the. Potential for PFAs. Around landfills and around water sources. That could be. Another huge issue next year and really make protecting. The the less contaminable water that doesn't have any PFAs in it. Even more important. So again, I would ask for your input and your. Contributions to this. The board would then assess how to work it in your comments, how to work it into the existing standard. If they were not taken verbatim or if there are any changes, we would come back to you and talk through. The modifications of the modifications, if you will. And we want to work with you as a team to strengthen your positions and your decisions. So. I hope. Gain your support to please contribute. And are there any questions? I'll take them now.
And before before we take questions. I want to talk a little bit about to the board on process on how we plan to get comments to you and. I also saw Chuck Dan with his hand up. Did you have a comment, Chuck, on some of it on the PFAS or?
Uh, yeah, I was just gonna talk about that, but you can come back to me if it's important or we can discuss it a different time.
Okay. All right, any questions for Peter from the board? I should, Sarah.
Think I think that the intent of this is commendable. We all want to protect our water supply. I'm struggling to figure out the duplicate. Regulations with zoning. We have, there's stormwater in here, there's earth removal, there's drainage. Bedrock disruption on a number of things. And so I'm. Wondering if. Town council or this has been reviewed. To see if it's really, if it's zoning. So just in terms of process. Before we get too far into this, it seems to me that a lot of this is. Already covered in zoning. Maybe I haven't gone through the details, but also whether or not you, does the Board of Health have jurisdiction? To regulate stormwater on development, earth removal and other. Related kinds of things. Has that been clearly or are there other towns doing this?
There are nine, there are nine other towns that are currently doing this. And there's another eleven that are in the process, including our neighbor. Hamilton. The we only have authority on those sites which would impact drinking water, period. And only to the extent that it impacts drinking water. Now, I gave this presentation to ZBA last week. They had no comments. They were they were fine with it and had no. Suggestions and had no problem with. Overlapping requirements when drinking water is involved.
Well, Peter, are these proposed regulations only for commercial developments?
Any any structure over twenty-five hundred square feet, new construction over twenty-five hundred square feet.
Do we have a list of the towns you mentioned that have adopted this?
I don't know if I I might have it on me. If not, I can certainly send it to you. Uh, wait a minute, Weston, Wayland.
Well, you can send it to us.
Lexington.
Okay. Anybody else?
And and the a copy of this has been sent to the EPA. DEP and to the town attorney. I have not heard back from the town attorney. So I don't know the status of that. I asked the EPA and the DEP to look at this from a legal perspective and from a technical. Is the technology correct? And. I asked them to please get back to me no later than September fifteenth. And if they didn't get back to me, I would assume there was no problems. Which may be a mistake with a government agency, but. Nobody got back to me.
Okay, we we need to figure out how we're going to get your comments, but Laura, you have.
Yes, I have a few, Mr. Colaruso. Thank you. I'm trying to figure out how the regulation applies and you said, on the one hand, over twenty-five, twenty-four hundred square feet. I see in other parts of the. Regulation, for instance, five point six point. Two points, sorry, five point six point two C for any development having ten or more dwelling units. Is regulated in that section and then five point seven. This regulation shall apply to any and all products for industrial and commercial developments or for any other non-residential development. So. I'm I'm confused reading through it, what it applies to. This seems to be. Catch all for many different types of activities to be regulated as Sarah. Mentioned and and I'm also wondering, so I'm wondering, one, who does it apply to and when and and. I see that significant. Development is. Defined, but it doesn't seem to match up always with the other mentions. And then. From things like stormwater. I am wondering again about the duplicity or redundancy of regulations and a concern that this may actually not keep up. So that if the, you know, state of Massachusetts is. Updating in storm rate water regulations and our general bylaw refers to those stormwater regulations. But this Board of Health. Regulation says things that are different, for instance, five point six point four drainage, the proposed drainage shall not cause an increase. Of more than ten percent. Storm of the total volume of runoff. We might actually have a tighter, more stringent requirement in our Massachusetts stormwater regulations. So. I. I'm wondering how this is going to be, how this is going to mesh with those other requirements that may actually move faster than this one.
Well, first of all, we would. We we could. Clarify, and I would ask you please to send those comments in to make sure that. It transmitted clearly to to the other board members. The the intent was to have any structure. On a lot. Over twenty-five hundred square feet, or if you have multiple structures. The total. Square footage. If the total square footage exceeds twenty-five hundred square feet. So if you have three or four houses of, you know. Twelve hundred square feet each, then that would exceed it. Because it's it's obviously concerned with the potential flow. As far as updating, we. Quite frankly, we have been. We haven't been updating some. Records on a timely basis. We have had a part-time twenty-five, six hours a week. Employee and you tend to have to put the fires out first. So things like the private wells. We are looking at to update all of those records and include them. In an annual. Census, if you will. We are now interviewing the last two weeks on a full-time health agent. Which. Would give us the staff at the personnel to update things as they become. Available as they become law, if you will, we would certainly. Want our regulations to be consistent, both with the state and with the planning and zoning. We're not looking to have any. Less rigorous or more rigorous regulations than. Either committee is comfortable with.
My thanks. Rebecca, I'm sure I have any hand up, any comments, any other comments from the board, Mary? Mary?
I just was going to comment that. It's already been mentioned, the overlap and that we, if this were to be adopted, that there was a plan in place for things like the earth removal. Blasting things like that when. When this. Is broader than perhaps what's in a bylaw, kind of how that verification process and over site process happens.
Well, this would only be applicable on. Projects that are initiated after the adoption date. So anything that's already in in the process would be grandfathered, number one. And the excavation actually was changed. It was originally three hundred and fifty cubic yards and then when we double checked, we realized the bylaw was at two hundred and fifty cubic yards. So we had to go back and reduce. The acceptable excavation. Which is an example of us trying to be, again, consistent with all the existing and potentially future regulations.
I have two questions, Mr. Colaruso. The first is. These regulations seem somewhat generic. And I'm wondering who drafted them and for what reason?
Right. I don't know who drafted them. They were sent. To. The Board of Health last October from the Means to Excess Conservation Trust. And I don't know who. Who was responsible for that. We felt as the board that we had a responsibility to respond. Either to accept, reject or amend. At that time, we voted to table it because we did not believe we had enough. Technical understanding of what was going on. And then I was, I left the room and got voted in to carry the torch. Never leave the room. And since then, we've had. Scott Porzly has reviewed it for for us. He volunteered. We were, we were going to hire him as part of the. The review process and he volunteered to do it for free. We also had. What's his name? The attorney, the environmental attorney. Review it. And again, he did it for for free. He volunteered to do it for free. Greg had given us access to four thousand dollars if we needed it. For expert. To review. The proposal and. That's that's where we are. I mean, I don't know. I I know that, you know, I was. Educated as a chemist and as a scientist. Mike Carvalho was the. The attorney. But. I don't know if I could have drafted this by myself and the other members of the. Board are more medical than they are biology or chemistry. Which is why I think I got elected to. Push this one through or to. Bring it to a point where we will understand it and we could get, hopefully we get consensus from all the boards. We've got a. Proposal that everyone's comfortable with. There is no regulation now in the Board of Health for clean water whatsoever. So I would suggest we need something. This may not be it, but we need something. And I got elected, so don't shoot the messenger, please.
My second, last I have three of these. The second one is apparently sewer connection is going to be reviewed as well. And there's a reference to a comprehensive wastewater management plan, which I don't think the town actually. Has, which is why I think this was crafted for something else.
I think we do have that. We do. It's about three hundred pages long. Yeah.
Well, in any case. I don't know why someone hooking up to the municipal sewer system would be required to do this. And then my third point is. You know, the amount that most of the runoff in this town is from existing properties, not new development. And I'm wondering if you're concerned, and that's where most of the pollution is going to come from, the existing properties. Are you considering? Some kind of bylaw change to start regulating drainage and runoff? From existing properties, which is what's going to be producing most of the pollution.
I that has not been brought up. I will tell you, however, that. We have been taking a. A very strong position. On existing septic systems. In fact. As an example, in nineteen ninety. A couple built a house and. The septic system was undersized and it got approved. They came to us a couple of weeks ago because they, it's obviously very old and it's not working very well and it's a. Non-conforming lot. There's not a lot of space for the. Leach field and and there's no, not enough soil. It's it's a problematic lot. And they they wanted an upgrade and we told them that. We can give them a variance for non-conforming lots, but. According to state law, it has to be the most advanced technology available at the time. Which would be two tanks so that whatever the effluence that comes out is. Not drinkable, but it's as close as you're going to get and it's pressure pressurized into the limited space so it gets. Spread throughout the whole thing. Now, that's much more expensive than they had planned. But we said, sorry, I mean, we can't. We can't approve something less than that. We we routinely require Presby systems, which are much more expensive. Than your standard system. So we are. Trying to upgrade. All of the septic systems. We're well aware that the beach closures are due to. Pathogens from the human digestive system, which obviously are coming from septic systems. But on the other hand, you know, those are existing systems and and we're trying to to walk a fine line. As far as the tie-ins, there was a letter. December seventh and. that allowed us off, out released us from the moratorium on septic systems and it referred to this three-hundred-page plan. And it said, the, the last paragraph said that the ultimate decision on who gets to tie in, according to this plan, is from the Board of Health. Now, there's some question about that, and I've asked the author of that letter for clarification. And again, I have not heard back, but we'll certainly comply with, you know, whatever, whatever it is. But that, my understanding is the plan says that those systems along one-twenty-seven up towards Gloucester, tying into the system should get the first shot at any reserve capacity. Then they're talking about allowing some capacity for expansion of existing homes, should people want to enlarge them or. And then the third was, I believe, was thirty-one thousand gallons for small commercial use. And, and that was over a twenty-year period would take up all of the excess capacity, the reserve capacity in our sewer system. Now, obviously, if there's more capacity, that changes, if the plan changes, that changes. Nothing is, is written in, in stone here and I anticipate that there will be amendments to anything going forward as the feds and the state become much more sensitive, both to potential health over, you know, COVID-type situations or clean water. My understanding is the EPA is now going to all the homes on the rivers that border, that go through Boston because of dog waste and fertilizer that's going into the Mystic River and the other rivers and into Boston Harbor, causing all kinds of problems. And they're going to the homeowners directly to try to manage that situation. So I think more rigorous monitoring of what's going on is gonna be, gonna be in the cards coming down. It can be us, it can be the state, or it can be the feds. I think having the town, various town committees doing it, or boards doing it is a much better option than trying to deal with either the state or the federal agencies.
All right, I have three hands up. I wanna go move a little more quickly on this. Probably picking subjects up again. Becky, you have a comment?
Hi, yes, thank you. Becky Jakes, twenty-two Forster Road. I have a couple of questions and I've not been able to find this online. Peter, is, is this proposed health regulation online at this point?
There is a version on the town website, but not the latest version. I had a discussion with Greg and I said, you know, we are, this is a work in progress, if you will. And every time there's a draft change, should we post it? Or, or should we, you know, wait and then post like the final draft, if you will? And he felt that if people see the same cover, they're not gonna read through to see where the changes are. So maybe it'd be best just to wait to post the final version when all of the comments are in and been incorporated.
Can you tell me where it is? Because I've
I don't, I don't know.
Just because I've not been able to find it and I've gone, anyway, okay, that was one question. The, thank you for answering that. Um, the other question, and I'm just, I'm curious terms of, you know, some of the other questions people have asked. And when, when you say that, that some of the items are going to be dependent upon size, for example, twenty-four, twenty-five hundred feet, are you talking, is that height of a building, width of a building, i- is, I mean, did those sort of factors? And I, I don't wanna go down a rabbit hole here, but I, I'm just wondering if, if those types of aspects have been looked into.
Well, the, the intent was to be concerned with the portion that will be underground and, and any potential runoff, so.
Okay, I'm, I'm not going to continue on. I'm, I'm just curious. And, and that's why I'd love to be able to see the, the the proposed drinking water regulation. And is this something that, is the Board of He, Board of Health unanimous in supporting this document?
We are unanimous in having a document. Maybe not necessarily this document. I think the feeling is that we need some kind of a clean water policy. This may not be it, but you know, it's a start, if nothing else. And they're gonna reserve judgment. I think, I don't wanna speak for them because I don't think that's appropriate. But, but I think my sense is that if zoning plan and CONCOM SB are all comfortable with it, then they will be too.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and cut you there because I wanna let others speak. But, but thank you, Peter. And I'm just asking because, you know, there, there are a number of questions in terms of specific direct implications and potential unintended consequences that I, I, I think. Yes, we need something, but we don't need a bad something. So that's
Correct, correct.
Thank you very much, Ron, for letting me speak.
Thank you. I'd like to just move through this quickly. We have a lot on our agenda. Sue Brown?
Thank you, Ron. I'll make this very quick. Clearly, this is, by its own admission, it's looking at new construction and new development. But the, but Mr. Coloruto said that the PFAS were found in things like paint and and, and many other construction items, which are used not only in new construction, but in paint jobs of existing buildings, et cetera. So I just wonder if, if we're looking to target PFAS, why we aren't creating a, a regulation that bans that substance and such substances rather than looking at trying to, trying to, what it seems to be like is, is trying to stop new construction or to, or to create additional regulations around new construction, which feels like land use. So I'm just curious as why we're just not banning the substance where it's known rather than going a different route.
I think, yeah, the, the intent is to, the feeling is you can't do much about existing buildings. They are what they are. They're grandfathered in. But we can minimize any future contamination by trying to use the latest technology in any new construction that would remove all of these potential contaminants. I mean, I, I could have all your hair fall out telling you all the stuff that's in asphalt. When I worked twenty years in a research lab, managing a research lab, and we worked with asphalt, and believe me, you don't wanna know all the stuff that is extruded from asphalt, roofing, parking lots, whatever. So the idea is to minimize future contamination. As far as PFAS go, we, that's gonna be a DPW nightmare. We'll do everything we can to help them and to support them. The feds are eventually going to outlaw more and more and more of these. Unfortunately, the ones, well, the ones that have already regulated are uses where the companies have already switched and are not, not using the PFAs anymore. And they're working their way towards other products, particularly in the construction industry, where the PFAs are used. We don't have the authority. And it would be a total nightmare to try to enforce no PFAs in any paint that's used, any roofing shingles, whatever. It's used in rugs. It's used in food containers. I mean, it's used everywhere. So I think you're right. If we could control the source, we'd be better off. But I think that's a job where the EPA is going to kinda call the shots.
All right, thank you. I wanna move quickly to Chuck and then I wanna just talk about a process on how to get comments to you.
I'll be quick, Ron. I just, I, I've, I've read the regulation that Peter has and I just think from a practical standpoint, there's no, there's no, nothing in that regulation. I don't even think it mentions PFAS except for in the preliminary. So there's no performance standards within it that are gonna do anything for PFAS. And like Peter said, the only treatment for PFAS is gonna be at the water treatment plant level or much larger sites like our landfill. So that I don't think is really gonna happen based on this regulation. But I guess the, the one thing that I did wanna point out, the CWMP does exist. It is on the DPW website. It does have a section, a big section on onsite use and Title V system, onsite system. So I, I guess I would say that whatever is contemplated here needs to be consistent with that CWMP, which in my mind supersedes anything that, or needs to be on the same path as the CWMP that anything else done on the Board of Health level or town level at that, because it is a comprehensive wastewater, wastewater management plan. So I'll, I'll leave it there. And if anybody wants to discuss the CWMP or PFAS in general, they can email me or stop by the office anytime.
All right, thanks, Chuck.
I had a quick comment. No, no, just so it sounds like there's a lot of pieces. We have a section, DPW has a section, Board of Health has. Does it make sense to make a small subcommittee of, of group few to talk about it?
Well, I think Peter wants to go around to all the boards first and then let's see what comes out of it, would be my suggestion.
Can we ask Peter what the timeline that he wants to like?
Yeah, what, what are your schedule, Peter? Are you going to the other boards? Are we the first?
No, I went through zoning last week. They, they had no comments and no edits. They said, fuck, they agreed that, that we need something to protect the water sources. They thought, you know, this was fine with, with the understanding that we may in the future need to make amendments. You're second. CONCOM is tomorrow. Then we'll probably wait a week or two weeks. When you tell us how much time you need to get your comments to us, I don't wanna go to select board with half a document, if you will. I'd like to go to them and say, this document reflects zoning planning, CONCOM, and the Board of Health. And then we'll, we go through all the public meetings and all that stuff.
All right, I think I'll leave it up to the select board on subcommittees, what they wanna do. I think what we should do is just try to get our comments, Peter, collectively. I'm thinking maybe sue's the repository or anyone have any other ideas or thoughts?
Well, I just pulled up the Massachusetts Regulations for Board of Health. And I don't see that they have jurisdiction to, for this issue. So I'd like to know that, from town council, what they have, if they have jurisdiction. And it's not that I'm against the idea of this. And so that's my biggest comment to start with. And I think the other thing is, if, given our experience working on zoning, this is a complex matter and its administration. When I look at the complexity of what you're trying to regulate here, it's a huge burden for an applicant as, and then a huge, huge burden for the Board of Health to appropriately evaluate all of the technical data that's being requested and then to evaluate those based on something that is a performance standard. And so I think, I wanna first know that the, that they have, that they have jurisdiction. And then I'm gonna put in a plug for zoning changes, which are moving the stormwater regulations to the general bylaw for more, for broader applicability and bringing them up to the state standards and referencing those in the zoning for new developments. So a plug for our zoning changes that do much of this in the general bylaw that are currently in our zoning. So they only currently apply to our new permits and they would more broadly apply. So we agree that this is, that some of these things are needed. And, but I'm not sure, I hate to have the Board of Health spend so much time trying to do this only to find that they don't have the, the, the process, because it reads to me like a lot of it's zoning, which would require two-thirds. If they wanna suggest zoning changes, then there's a whole process for that. And I think we're open to that. So that's, I think it's a process for me about, that's
So Ron, I have a question for you, actually. So how does this relate to the Water Quality Task Force? Isn't this the same thing?
They're first and then they were told to go around and get input from all the boards and then report back to the select board.
So is this part of the water task force?
No, no, the way, initially I went to the water resource. Let me back up. When I was asked in last October to head this, this effort, I did a little resource, research on who were the experts in the fields. In November, I was asked to, by the town to serve on the Water Resource Committee, which I was honored and I accepted. I then found out that all the experts that I were looking for were on the committee. So the, the, there was an issue then because the committee reports to the select board. And anything that comes out of the committee has to go through the select board. The mass regs prohibit town officials from influencing or being involved in any Board of Health policy. At which point Greg offered four thousand dollars to hire these people independently to provide, to educate us and to review the proposal. I went to these, the, the two people, actually, Scott Porzly and and, and Mike, and asked if I could hire them through the Board of Health to educate us and to review these. And they both said, we'll do it for free. There's no need, you know, to go through all that process. So we're not, we're not really involved with the Water Resource Committee. Yes, they're focusing on new sources of water. They're focusing on conservation. They're not really focusing on regulations to keep the water as as clean as possible, non-contaminated, from a health, from a health perspective only. This is only from a health perspective. And we clearly got a positive from the Department of Public Health, Department of Environmental Protection, that we have authority to develop policy to protect public health. So again, I wanna reinforce that, that comments pro and con need to be on that theme. It needs to be public health-related. Anything else is, has nothing to do with us.
Done, Chris Laura?
I don't feel ready to start text editing this document. I think, I, my second Sarah's question about where the jurisdiction falls.
These are the type of comments I think we should make.
Okay. Kind of keeping it a high level because I just, I think it's, we could really, it's a twenty-two-page-long document and we got a lot of weeds to cultivate. So I just wanna make, I wanna see if everybody's on the same page with that, though. There are certainly some ideas of merit, but there's a lot of overlap with what we're proposing to do. So I just want to make, I want to see if everybody's on the same page with that, though. There are certainly some ideas of merit, but there's a lot of overlap with what we're proposing to do. And and it sounds, seems to me that another twenty-two page regulation on land use, which has many different facets, but doesn't doesn't actually control for PFAS, doesn't control stormwater, non-point source pollution from existing uses and so forth. Um, I, I just don't think we should get distracted by this right now.
High level comments first, jurisdiction and uh do our own regs and all those kinds of comments, I think we should stick with. And then get into the weeds if it, whenever we get those answers. And I'm thinking um we do that, maybe give them to Sue and then Sue can compile them. And then send them on to Peter.
Please send them directly to the Board of Health.
Well, I think we'd like to collectively, uh you know, give you something from the plan. I mean, I don't think individually we want us to start sending your comments. I mean, unless.
No, I mean, when when you, when you have a, when you have a consensus document where you've all contributed, instead of sending it to me.
Okay.
Um, I would appreciate if you sent it to the Board of Health. Obviously, I have access to it. But I think that would be a a neater, cleaner way to do it.
Are we in agreement, board?
Appropriate person or Sue? Just questioning.
Who?
Gail or Sue?
Gail or Sue, I don't, I don't care. You're one.
I think so. She should be able to sympathize a plus.
Just seems like an admin.
Yeah.
Do we get to review it and and?
Yeah, I I think, yeah, I think we'll we'll take them and then maybe.
I would like to see the individual who said what versus no names. Like, I would like to see who's saying.
So maybe we make it just admin. Maybe we send it to Gail with our names and then Gail will just compile them on a Word document. And then send them, then spit it out, put it in our meeting packet and just for discussion at our future meeting. I don't know if it's gonna be next meeting, because there's three public hearings, so we'll see. Okay, thank you, Peter.
Thank you very much for your time, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Stein and uh forty-seven Pleasant Street. This, the applicant is here to to obtain a determination from the planning board under section ten point five point, ten point three point five point one P. Ground and circus water O L A protection district zoning by law. He regards to land uses that result in their rendering impervious of more than fifteen percent or twenty-five hundred square feet of any lot. Artificial recharge or precipitation provided, which is satisfied factors in the. This will not, and that this will not result in degradation of the groundwater quality. With that in mind, this is referred to us by, from poor Orlando, because the applicant is teaching a building permit. Uh, did I get that right, Mr. Stein?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
You all have paper copies and Mr. Stein, you can do that.
Can I share my screen? Is that possible?
I think I made him call us. I think he can bring that. My battery's good.
It looks like I can do it. Can everyone see that? Great. So I just wanted to orient you to the site uh real quick. And oh yeah, I'm Brian Stein with BDS Design and also I have on the call tonight, Mike Novak from Patriot Engineering, who did all the drainage calks. Um, so just to orient you, we're at Pleasant Street in Wilmington. Have uh this red box here is the site forty-seven Pleasant. Um, just wanted to show you, there's an existing home, uh existing garage, existing shed, and existing paved driveway. Along with some concrete walkways and a patio, which kind of is in shadow here. We're proposing to raise all of that and build a new home, uh new driveway and so forth, garage. Um, we are, get the site plan up here. This is the site is proposed, home is proposed. Um, we, the existing property is currently over the fifteen percent slash twenty-five hundred square feet of impervious. It's around thirty-two seventy. Um, our proposed condition is thirty-two sixty. Um, and as Mike will explain, we are infiltrating a fair amount of that uh from the roof capture and so forth. Um, so real quick, garage attached to the house with a connector, main house here. There's a deck off the off the north side, uh covered porch, proposed paved driveway, stone area of the driveway, which is a turnaround. Um, and then a couple of minor walkways up to the entrances. Um, so Mike, if you want to take over and talk about your proposed design, that'd be great.
Sure. Thanks, Brian. Again, Mike Novak from Patriot Engineering. Uh, can everyone hear me? Okay.
Now we can.
Okay, great. Um, so as yeah, as Brian said, we're we're in a situation where we're tearing down the existing house and putting up a new one. We're over the threshold. So what we did is we uh performed some onsite soil testing, uh found some ledge. But we did, we were able to get about about five feet or so, a little more uh down, determine native material, didn't see any groundwater. So what I went ahead and did is size two systems, uh one to the north of the plan, one to the south of the plan and um to take the entire roof area uh as proposed. The systems will capture and infiltrate uh up to the hundred year with with some overflow uh beyond at at or above the hundred year storm. Uh, so because of that and the the size of the of the lot, uh I went ahead and did a pre and post analysis to determine the runoff uh with some stormwater releases where we are reducing in both rate and volume for two, ten and a hundred year storms uh of site runoff, pre to post. So again, only overflow from the systems at or above the hundred year storm, everything else will stay uh contained and infiltrated fully within those two proposed systems for the entire roof area, uh modeled the remainder of the impervious area on site. We're still uh reducing from pre to post uh in all storms. And uh the details are shown on the plan for the systems, uh the areas to the to the systems are shown on the plan as well. A little hard to see on the screen, but you can see that majority of the house goes to the larger system, the remainder of the house goes to the smaller system. Uh, I think that's it in a nutshell. Any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So on the plan, it says eight hundred and eighty square feet. What does that represent on the calendar?
If you could point to the part you're referring to, be happy to.
Right, in in the impervious area, Mike.
Oh, that's that's the additional impervious area that's left on the site after the the full proposed uh development. That is not captured from the, yeah, so we have the thirty-two hundred plus existing. The total proposed, as Brian mentioned, was ten under, uh and then we take out the roof area. So we're only left with a with a net or a delta of eight eighty of total.
What percent of that is that of the uh?
What percent of, I lost you a little bit, sorry.
What's the percent um impervious?
Based on the lot size?
Yeah.
Uh, that would be just let me find the lot area. Well, that's not on the plan. That's why you asked. Um, I'll just have to find the lot here. Play with me a second, I'll get that one.
Sixty-two hundred or something.
Okay, so it is, yeah, where it's about fifty, just a little over fourteen percent impervious. That is, that is not captured from the, to the systems.
The lot's six thousand.
Yes, the lot is nine thousand two sixty-six and they're proposing three thousand two sixty. Oh, that's in the application. I had no clue. I think it comes out to like thirty-five percent?
Three out of nine, yeah, three, that's a third.
Yeah, that's right.
Is the driveway asphalt?
Yes, most of it. There's an area, the turnaround, we made stone. Crushed stone, yeah.
So if that were all crushed stone, that would change the calculation.
If the drive, the Thai driveway was stone?
Yes.
It would just reduce the the difference from pre to post further. Um, but again, we're we're under already when you compare pre to post. So it would just reduce it further. That that doesn't change the system size because the driveway is not being captured.
Well, you're under because of the the existing, the subsurface, the proposed infiltration systems. Not because, right, without those, you're not under.
Correct.
Relying on the infiltration systems, you get.
Well, we we're under the existing condition too.
Understood.
Did you mention any earth removal? Because it's gonna be a new foundation. That's why I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead, Mary.
Um, so it looks like you're creating new foundations. It's what's, um, have you reviewed the earth removal by law for compliance?
I honest honestly have not. Um, we only have this area of the house here that's ha- that has a basement.
So that was my question.
Is it existing basement?
There is an existing basement in the old house.
Are you proposing a basement?
No.
Are you creating a new basement?
Yes.
Okay, so then.
There there is, there is an existing basement in the old house, which we are removing.
Um, I think we do have to look at the earth removal by law.
I think we're well.
So based on that, that was gonna be my question about the basement. So some of the things that we've seen in the past is the historical um high groundwater table level. I didn't see that here. And so you said you went down five feet, but I don't see the plans for the basement. How deep would the basement go?
The basement is the standard height, four of seven, ten, but the um house is, you know, two and a half feet out of the ground, probably.
So the basement will be more than five feet, though. So my question is, you haven't gone down deeper to see where groundwater actually is, or do you have any?
That that's on the plan. That's on the plan. Estimated high groundwater, Mike, is.
Okay, so where's that?
It it it, well, yeah, just to be, if I may, just to be clear, um, the reason we didn't go any deeper is because we hit ledge. We, the machine that I had on site could not get through the the rock that we hit. And the the site as it exists now, didn't have a lot of other places to to do any testing. So um my my test bit shows that we didn't observe any groundwater. You're correct in saying that we didn't go as probably as deep as the basement would be. But uh there's no reason that we should, I would anticipate any groundwater based on the soil that I saw. But again, that, you you're correct, I didn't, I didn't observe to the depth of the basement.
Okay, so in that same bylaw that we're addressing, we're addressing P O addresses that and it shouldn't be um groundwater shouldn't be within four feet of where you finished the grade, is my understanding. So where do you estimate that the groundwater is?
Uh, I I can't.
Use historical data.
Yeah, so I've I've looked at a historical data for around the corner uh on another project and the historical data showed uh a pride, I don't have it in front of me, so I'm going by memory. But that was uh roughly nine feet. Uh, the way I read the bylaws, it says the existing uh historic groundwater level. So it looked to be about nine feet on an average. It obviously fluctuated, but I would say over the span that I looked at, it was a, it was a nine foot depth. So nine foot down from where we are here is fifty-four. You're down forty-five would be groundwater potentially. So elevation forty-five versus fifty-four. Uh, so if the first floor, Brian, is going to be, do you have an idea of where that's gonna sit?
I can't remember off the top, my fifty-six and a half, fifty-seven.
So fifty, so say fifty-six five, fifty-six five minus eight feet for rounding purposes, that's forty-eight and a half. And that's well above the the forty-five on estimated groundwater level.
I'm having a hard time hearing you, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no problem. Uh, where, what, where did you lose me?
Groundwater.
Groundwater.
All right, I'll, I'll, no, no problem. Uh, I'm sorry, uh, sum up as fast as I can. So I did look at this for another project around the corner. Uh, I determined that the average historical groundwater elevation was plus to minus nine feet. Nine feet down from fifty-four would put us at forty-five. Brian just said the first flow would be about fifty-six to the half down the rounded up eight feet of basement. We're talking that elevation of forty-eight and a half, which is well above the elevation of forty-five. So I don't think we'll have any issues with intercepting historical groundwater with this foundation. Everybody hear the whole thing there?
I got, I got the math, I got the elevational math, yeah. So I guess my question is, um, and I, I'm, this seems fine. I just would like to make sure whatever we decide to, if it's not within four. I mean, if they find it, we need to be notified ASAP and then it needs to be reviewed again. That's my concern, because I think the water, because of ledge, maybe there isn't great historical information so soon as they do hit groundwater. Um, this may need to be revisited.
Well, we can condition it and the building inspector.
Yep.
Now, can you tell us what our jurisdiction is here for this review?
Um, yeah, so could you define our jurisdiction on this? I think it was just the determination on impervious.
No.
Yeah, can I?
Drainage.
Can I, can I, um, sorry, can I, um, to terminate, it's just a determination to assure that um, that there's an adequate system of ground charge, given that it's thirty-five point one eight percent and the maximum is thirty-five percent.
So this is the same thing.
According, according to my calculations.
With the infiltration.
Yeah.
Um.
Chair.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask where the existing curb cut is.
Yeah.
That, we have to come back for a curb cut later.
No.
It it's it's right here, right where it says fifty-two, where the existing driveway is, it'll be up here.
Have you been in front of the ZBI?
We don't need to.
Okay, so this is one of those um situations. It seems to me that uh the building permit is being potentially granted before the curb cut has been granted. So um right? And and so it seems to me that the right thing for the building inspector to do is to put this back to us to say a curb cut application is needed. Um, and given that, without knowing what this street is, um, it is closer to the intersection than um it was previously. And so therefore, without a sidewalk or any knowledge of the site, just based on what I'm seeing here. You're making the curb cut is is potentially more dangerous. On the other hand, to access the garage from the current curb cut is that same problem we had on the other one. You know, would it require more impervious surface?
Well, let me flip the the flip, yeah, or change the design.
But um it does seem to me that the curb cut in its current place does not serve the building. And therefore, I think we should talk to Paul and say, let's try to get on the same page here with these curb cuts. And um uh approve the curb cut before we approve the building permit. Um, a curb cut that makes sense for the new design, seems to me. That's not what's before us right now, that said, but um, what is the distance? Can I, so can I ask the applicant, what's just out of curiosity, what's the distance from the uh corner to the curb cut, the new curb cut roughly?
Roughly, probably from here, probably fifty, fifty-five feet.
How wide and how wide is your proposed driveway?
It's about eighteen feet here, because the garage is twenty-four.
Probably two eighteen, so it's about thirty.
And it's um
It looks like you have a.
Well, no, I'm saying from from this point, it's about fifty, fifty-five feet from the front part of this driveway, first part of the driveway. Existing curb cuts at least twenty-four feet.
So we like to look back for safety and go out there and, why don't you get back with with a curb cut, curb cut?
Save yourself.
Yeah, that was, that was the plan. This was um, you know. Uh, I'll I'll be frank, initially, we, I was told by Paul that, given that we were gonna be under the impervious of the old house. We didn't have to come uh for for this permit or for this determination initially. So after a number of months and, you know, a building permit application, we, he then said we did. So that's. After a number of months and you know, a building permit application, we he then said we did. So that's we were rushing to kind of get this in. As you know. Um, so we we can cer- we will certainly come back with the with the curb cut permit application soon.
Yeah, and I would imagine that. I don't know what year the house that's sitting there is currently built, but I would assume they do not have an underground infiltration system. I'm sure some need occurred after it. So. I'm concerned that they would get the recommendation. They didn't need to come to the planning board because they're under what is existing. That needs to be communicated that that. Should always, they should always come to the planning board because they do not.
So to follow up on my prior comment, can we make a motion to approve this? Uh, under section, what's where's my agenda?
But I'm, but I'm, we're gonna approve something in the driveway.
Here, here we hang out, um.
Five point, ten point three point five point one.
Ten point three point five point one. With the provision um to be uh put on to be added to the plan. That uh. Prior to work commencing. Uh, a curb cut will be applied for. Or or for prior to a building permit being issued, a a recommendation to the building inspectors that a curb cut be approved. And secondly. That the existing curb cut uh curb cut and pervious surface will be abandoned. And thirdly, that an as-built be submitted to the building inspector following construction.
So I they're gonna have to blast them if they hit ledge within five feet.
Then that's a bad blasting current. We can't foresee that, right?
No, we can't. I'm just concerned about the four. I don't beat high water, that's all.
So my three conditions would be that. A recommendation of building inspector, because I don't think we can tell them what to do to uh uh. To require a curb cut in advance of the building permit. Secondly, that the um existing curb cut would be abandoned and what was and the third one was. Uh, that as builds be filed with the building inspector and the planning board following construction.
I would like to add a fifth, if groundwater is. Reached, then work stops and this is reconsidered, right?
That would be up to the building inspector to enforce.
So so we could act, we could do the same thing. We could give him advice that the building inspector. Be.
It's actually a prohibited use.
What's prohibited?
What?
Construction within four feet of the groundwater.
Not not for buildings, not for buildings, foundations.
Actually.
But. But that's this is a, this is a issue. This that's not an issue that's unique to this site. Right? This is a an issue that anytime anybody digs in Manchester to Laura's point, they potentially. Could come upon groundwater and. It's up to the building inspector to look in the hole and say, oh, look, we have groundwater. I I mean, I don't know what the answer to that problem is, but I'm.
Well, we're making a determination that they don't need a permit because this filtration system is sufficient, right? So my question is, if the conditions change and it's not sufficient. We need to be notified.
Well, excluding the groundwater isn't gonna change. The infiltrations are systems are adequately above groundwater. Whatever they find in the basement is not gonna affect that. And groundwater tables fluctuate decently and with, you know, other conditions. But the infiltration. I don't think we can put a condition on a project when it's mid-construction. Good.
Well, for that, we did have one, though, that um they ended up, we approved, the planning board approved. They ended up digging the foundation way lower than they had said. And they had to come back and review the infiltration system and now he thought of. Down the corner of Pulaski and Pleasant, and now he's. Hooked up to go into the town sewage drains and he's on a constant um. Sump pump and so. To your point, I mean, they sometimes you do have to come back after you've hit the water table and what was approved was not sufficient. You remember that one?
I remember, but I don't think it changed for us.
Oh, not the sump pump, but he they had to redo their underground water infiltration system because it wasn't.
Where we could stop it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So. So can can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, go ahead, Brian.
Um, I I'm not as familiar with your planning board, but I was on Hamilton Planning Board for a while and I. This is a determination, correct? It's not a special permit.
Correct.
Are you allowed, are you you allowed to condition a determination?
That's a good question.
I thought, yeah, I I'm pretty sure it's special permit and variance.
Well, we're determining it based on the facts that you gave us, so if the facts change.
No, but I was adding conditions to termination.
Right.
Me to his point.
I'm I'm not sure.
Question?
So I would agree that a determination means that you do not need a special permit. Um, Christina is correct that if if during construction one hits groundwater, they are in fact required to notify. Um, the town, it is the DPW and they together work through a solution. So and it's. So, yeah, so I think he's right. You don't. Condition a determination. I think so. I think your condition, Sarah, could be handled offsite and I think, I mean, off. Outside of this process with a discussion with the with Paul and I know that he intended to put the driveway curb cut next. Um, so I think you. Your determination is that it does not need a special permit because it has adequate um drainage and then you go from there.
So my.
Well, what about the curb?
The terminations could be as a memo to the building inspector that we've looked at this. It doesn't have a curb cut that we've approved. And that we would.
So can I offer a friendly amendment to your motion?
Of course.
That we uh that we submit comments as part of the determination to the building inspector. And the comments would include those conditions that you mentioned, Sarah, and even Christine does as far as. There are just comments on.
Comments to the building inspector. For me, this is out of sequence. If we approve a curb cut first, that tells us where the driveway is gonna go, then that helps calculate the. Surface on the site. And if we're approving a driveway, that's a theoretical right now, before we repeat the curb cut, that may be in a different part of the lot, then. What we approved today for the pervious surface. Regardless of where the groundwater table is, may change.
So why don't we do that? Why don't you submit the curb cut first and then we can go ahead with the determination? That makes sense?
Uh, that depends.
What, what's?
Well.
I wonder now.
Well, Paul had. The billing inspector had had said that once we. Have this this determination, this approval for the drainage. That we could move forward. Now. Part of it is just getting this thing started as it's as it's taking a little while. Um, and we have every intention of coming back pretty quickly with the curb cut. Um. I understand where you're going with. Uh, with the driveway and so forth, but the driveway. You know, isn't part of the drainage system which we're here for.
It's part of the pervious surface.
It correct, correct. But we're here for the drainage. The drainage system. And that's, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but you're you're capturing all the roof. You're not capturing the driveway or the.
Are you saying you're getting a building permit with the drainage with this approval?
I'm sorry.
Are you getting a building permit?
I.
Based on this approval?
All all I all I know. Is that, I mean, we we again, we know we need a curb cut permit. But that wasn't, well. It was my understanding from Paul that. He, you know, that. We'd be the the next step in the process with the building permit. I think it's been through all the departments. Um, and they were waiting on, we were waiting on this drainage. Um.
Well, I I appreciate the fact that you've been around the barn on this, but we have only seen this for tonight. And so. I think we are being asked to kind of de facto. Uh, and to Laura's point, we're. A curb, we're we don't, this is the 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 location of the driveway and the curb cut are one and the same. And therefore we should see the curb cut at the same time. If you want, and the the the. Impervious service is part, the proposed driveway is the impervious surface. So I'd suggest that you come in with a curb cut application. We take it up in there two in two weeks. And do our very best to give you a determination and a curb cut approval or or some other. Thing before that, we can do a sidewalk before the next two weeks and then you'll be good to go. And I'm sorry that that. The case, but. We just had, the problem here is. Before, earlier in the meeting, we had this exact situation where. Or or maybe it was the other day, I don't know, I can't remember anymore. Um, one thing is approved. Under one provision and we're trying to move to something that's more coordinated. So in you, because the last thing you want to do is get to your, whenever your curb cut happens to come before us. And find out that we that we don't think it's the safe place for the curb cut. So I know it sounds bureaucratic, but you're we're saving you a step here, but you know. So I know you want to get in the ground and. Oh, but to me, it seems like come back with a curb cut. Let's take it up in two weeks.
But is it only two weeks? Cause we have to notify Butters.
Yeah, you do.
Brian, you have to notify Butters um with an approved Butters list.
Yep.
And and then seven days later, you put forward your application so it can be done within two weeks.
Okay.
Sound like a plan?
I guess we don't have a choice.
Great.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Only that we can put this into a formal. Process to talk to Paul, something related.
You ever did the first time? For a while that we're saying.
So we're trying to avoid that. Thank you.
I thought you were like being sarcastic that it was fine.
This is exactly the same situation as when the same exact lot configuration as when the mayor park. Same exact thing. And when we turn this over to DPW.
This is my.
I have that concern too.
This is my concern.
Yeah.
So you wanna take a little bio break before we get into. Five minutes and then I'll try to be meeting all the device chair. Sarah Craig.
The air and everything off. That was breathing. Put your jacket on. Is everyone warm now? Are you good? Okay, I'm just making sure.
I'm doing the stretch break, right? We'll be back.
Have you ever gotten one of these packages?
Oh, no.
Well, you came late, so this is. Package for tonight.
These are the things?
No, yeah.
But you already had the one on your left, your right. When you just picked up, you just.
So they're both the same. I think I'm gonna hold the public hearings at the same time, because we're the same application.
Oh, yeah.
This one will be the town's application.
Have we, if we could do this one first, because I have to accuse myself that I'm coming back from a. Yeah. A site, I'm coming back from a master, so. Um. So.
Are we not gonna meet next month?
Well, or or next, yeah, I think young forest Tuesday, so then.
I think young compores today.
Oh, no, Rashashan is Monday. So we have to meet. No, it's Tuesday, so we have to meet Monday. If we're gonna meet, we'll see how much we get done tonight.
Yeah, let's not try to go beyond ten.
Oh, God. It's so much better in person, though. I mean, it it's hard. It's not better for the people. But. I just feel like you can have conversation a little bit more about. You know, my mind got changed on a couple of things tonight because of conversation.
Yeah.
So. So this is.
Water.
Oh, I could take a drink too.
Sorry, I haven't gotten back to you.
No. I was away.
And we get to look at the quote. All right. Um.
Different sports at different times at different places.
No, it's there. He's there. Do you know the team beaches we call Old Black Beach?
All right. It's only, I know everybody. I'm going to. Christina, you're. Everyone else is needed. Does anybody need a copy of the motions that we did last time? So is our water bottle pool arms here? I gotta go all the way down?
No, it's downstairs.
All right.
They put a stony broken one.
Does anybody need um Laura or Ron, do you need copies of that motion, those motions that we did last time?
Uh, sure.
Oh, I have one extra copy.
So press, is that room five? At the top of the steps.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay. You just felt like doing some stairs.
Well, I figured that you all.
Just making sure you know.
Yeah. What we do, what's what's the cracker business?
That's next week.
Yeah.
For next week.
Oh, next week.
Crocker, Manchester Marine and the special and the fields.
Yeah.
Do you have a plan?
About, is there a plan?
Okay, so I'm gonna.
And welcome back. So at this point, I'd like to just turn the meeting over to our bike chairs, our credentialed to. Continue with the master plan and recompensation.
Okay. Yeah, um, great. Thank you, everybody. I'm going to take a motion to. Continue the public hearing for the, on zoning changes. Uh, the deliberation portion of the public hearing. So take a motion to do this, do so. So, uh, Ron has moved and Chris has seconded. I do need a rule call, I think, on this. Laura?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
I'll vote yes.
Yeah.
Um, Christina.
Yeah.
Very all voting favorite. Thank you. Um, at the last working session on the twentieth, we. Had some proposed motions, um, and we worked through articles eleven, ten, nine. Oh, eight was adult entertainment. We did not talk about that. But I had not received any motions for changes to adult entertainment proposal, so. Um, unless, if anybody had some freedom, let me know. Um, so I'm going to suggest we start at the top now and work with articles one. Uh, four, because three and. Three are the general bylaws and the, um. Numbering, or at least at, at right now. So let's start with, um.
Can, can I do, can we go back?
Let's go back after we've had.
Okay.
I know. We're all going to think about things, but let's see if we can, my goal here is to see if we can get some of these to town council. So that they have time to review them and give us comments if they have concerns. Um, before the warrant closes. So. Uh, and so it's like, right, so. Um, so I'm hoping that some of these we can move through fairly quickly. Um, so article one is to modify sections one through four. And does everybody have the proposed motions? A two, an extra copy. Everybody needs one. Do you need this? Oh, you'll share with him. Okay. And here's, if you want. You got that? You've got it for, uh, okay, here, Laura.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, we had a couple of suggestions, um. Uh, mostly, well, not to be judged. So the first was, um. It, none of the, no, no suggestions for section one and then section two, which is the definition section. Under impervious surface. Um, delete. And runoff, so the, um, the surface or land, impervious surfaces is the, uh. Surface or land covering that prohibits penetration of water into underlying ground layers. As a result, rain and snow are unable to infiltrate into the ground. And, and the proposal is strike and runoff. I think the, where are we? Uh, under definition of impervious surface. So it's just strike and runoff.
Yeah.
So. Uh, yeah, it's line.
Slowly.
Two oh nine. Well, the, yeah, well, it's, I think it, it's that the result is a runoff, but. As written. It's saying it's grammatically. Yeah, it's grammatically. I think it just unable to infiltrate into the ground is sufficient.
Well, doesn't it infiltrate into the ground and then runoff?
So.
No.
Under what, underground?
No, that wouldn't be runoff. Runoff is surface water.
Yeah.
But it is just poorly stated. It might have been mine, but, uh. Yeah. So just, I think, taking and run.
How about, uh, result in runoff?
Resulting in runoff.
Resulting in runoff, if you want to put a comma after the ground.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah. Is anybody have a problem with that one? Okay. Um, so Sue and Gail, um, like Gail has these. We're just going to agree that that's going to be a typo. It's going to be comma resulting in runoff. Sue, are you still there?
I am.
Great, thank you.
Runoff is one word.
Runoff. Okay, one up the standard. Okay, um, the next one was home occupation to add. Software developers, other professionals working from home before similar occupations. It was very dated. Um, uh, description of home occupations. Currently, it reads customary home occupations, including photographers, artists, home cooking, dressmaking, millinery, hairdressing. And the proposal is add software developers, other professionals working for home.
Can we strike all of that and just say professions working from home?
Well, we had gone around and around with this with Bobrowski. Dick fell back onto what we have. So I think that the assumption was made that, you know, people working from home is not a home occupation.
I don't know. I think a lot of people work from home now.
Yeah.
Um, as a, as a sole proprietor or that kind of thing.
Yeah. So I thought just giving background, I.
Concern was anything that you don't have a customer coming to your residence was fine. Anything else was out of the norm.
You had to say, you had to write fine.
Yeah. So I think that's. What we were struggling with at that time.
The clause we need then, that there's no sort of retail or direct services.
Similar occupation, how about add the software developers and other professions working from home where, uh, without, um.
I don't even know why we need software developers.
Well, it was just a suggestion.
Software developers and dressmaking. Sitting stranger by the minute.
Where were the, can you just refer to where these suggestions come from?
Uh, this one, I was suggesting by Ann Harrison. I have it in the motion, the proposed motion. Do you need a copy?
Oh, I don't have one. Is it in the chair of Chris?
This is the, the document we had last time.
Oh, I do have it. Are you guys sharing? Is this an extra?
No, I think we're gonna.
Would you like one for us to, oh, okay. I thought you'd share one.
This one starts with three, so this one.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Could we just? I like five persons, you know.
You're not looking at the right thing, Ron. You want to look at this. Oh, oh.
I thought they were sharing.
All you gotta do is add subtract one on the article.
Sure. One between one with the numbers.
Yeah, that one just, you just.
This one starts with three.
Right, so just subtract one from two from every article number in your visa.
Is anybody doing this or no?
No. Okay, yeah, it's the same, just. Yeah, okay. So dressmaking would have been a service where someone came to your house. I'm just trying to understand what we're after here. I don't think, I think. It's a very dated, uh, yeah.
What's millinery?
Hat making.
Never heard that.
It might be the existing definition is what is we're trying to. I don't know. I don't think we need to get too hung up on it, but.
Yeah, why don't we just instead do what Ann said?
Yeah.
Why? I mean, I guess, why, why are we going to add something just?
I don't know how.
Talking about it for three years.
How about?
And we're going to add it just, I'm just not.
When do we, do we ever refer to home occupation would be helpful if we knew the context, what we're regulating.
So when we discussed this, that we, we had concerns about people. Creating.
Businesses.
Yes.
Businesses.
Well, businesses.
Businesses with a retail. Direct to. Direct to the consumer kind of a relation, right?
Concerned about coming and going deliveries. Traffic.
Usual suspects.
Yeah.
Well, we currently allow all of it, I assume.
Right, if you're making cakes from your home. So, uh, our use table.
Yeah.
Has a accessory use, which is customary home occupation.
Okay.
Conducted in the dwelling by a person residing on the premises. And it's allowed in all of our uses. Okay, so customary. So that's the same, uh, customary home occupations. Conducted in the dwelling by a person residing on the premises. That's what the use table has and that's, that'll be the only place it comes. And that is a note fourteen, sorry, note fourteen says. Provided there are no visible displays of goods from the street and no exterior advertising, except a sign of not more than two square feet. Providing such occupation shall not be carried on in an accessory building. So that's the proposed. So it's really a not great consequence in the definition section. The use table seems to kind of handle it.
So the other thing is we don't define. A person resident on the premises, is that even the complete actual sentence? By a person resident on the premises. So there's no definition of resident.
Well, living there.
Well, living.
Living there on the premises.
So my question is, and this came up before, and I, I think we're just not closing loops. I think we're just maybe, so if someone had an accessory. Unit, an accessory building, not a dwelling unit, could you rent that out to someone else? For a business.
No, that use table says you can't. You say those you can't, but it's independent of the, the definition. The definition is a definition. It doesn't give any rights or, um, the rights are from, are in, are in section four. So I think you're.
Why don't we just say C section, the table?
Well, that, well, we're just doing is defining home occupation. I think it's not a big deal. So, I, I guess, can I just try to close this up by saying? I'm, I, I suggested that we add software developers and other professionals working from. Home by a person resident on the premises.
Sarah.
Yeah.
Sarah, this is Sue. Um, so the last draft of Bobrowski's. Draft, draft eight has home occupation. Um, defined as an accessory use as set forth in section three point three. I don't know how this old.
Yeah, exactly.
In this, this outdated. So I think we need, I think maybe we need to look and see if we've got the most current. Um, definitions up there, because that one definitely is not.
I think we have the most current definitions in the packet of materials that we've. I don't know what Bobrowski's draft eight, that's like two years ago. And we. Like this, that's why that, that may be the case, but we can't, I, I'm not going to overrule Sue's suggestion about going back to. I mean, if, if we have a good definition for home occupation, great, but I don't want to go back to draft eight on anything, because we have long since. Uh, gone around and around.
But that's kind of my point. We're taking more suggestions after we deliberated this for like hours, so.
If it's not important to anybody besides me, then let's just pass them over. Is anybody?
Oh, my goodness.
I don't think it's important, actually, anyway. Let's not, do they want to make a motion to that effect or let's just move on? Okay, great. We, um, then the other thing is, uh, we identified that we had not made a definition of municipal use. So as Sarah Melish was pointing that out in our conversation with her, so I looked it up and propose, uh, to insert. In section two, a new definition municipal use. Facilities or land used by the town of Manchester by the sea.
We have, I will say we kind of have it in the use table.
We do have a new table. We don't have it in the definitions, so again, it doesn't confer use.
I would say that we did go through an exercise and it was determined that we weren't going to have definitions for everything.
So if we don't need it, then that's fine.
So we have municipal yards and facilities, town yards and related storage facilities for de-icing sand. So I think this is really close to municipal facility. I mean, use.
We talked about this one report too. Sue was going to interject something. Yeah, Sue, go ahead.
I was going to say the same thing. We've already worked through this. It's in, I'm sorry, but it's in eight, which was, I don't think we've made any large changes. To the definition since that was put out there, um, and it's municipal yards and facilities. Was the definition.
You think municipal yards and facilities is sufficient?
Yeah, I think that, I think that there's an older version.
Facilities is not, um, playing fields or town hall or.
Definitely a facility.
And we just.
But can we just go back? To the definition part of eight and capture anything that's new that we looked at and put it back in here? So we get rid of the old language? Hopefully, no need to debate it again.
That takes another public meeting.
Yeah.
No. Yeah, like, uh, I think that.
Gets added to Sarah's list for future.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So do we want to add a municipal use, um, or just not? That's the question.
Add it, what, what do we?
What I'm proposing is just facilities or land used by the town of Manchester by the sea. So that would be a police station or more than just. Town yards and storage.
You're using facilities within another definition already.
Well, storage facilities.
Modified.
Facility is going to be used more than once, I think.
Mobility. Defines the.
The word that you're defining them.
How about buildings? Buildings or land used by the town of Manchester by the sea. Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I'll take a motion to, uh, add municipal use as buildings or land used by the town of Manchester by the sea.
Or infrastructure.
Buildings, land or. Structure.
Structures, is that a building?
Infrastructure.
Is that a building?
No, buildings, land and.
Yeah.
Or in those structures.
Yeah.
Buildings, land or infrastructure used by the town of Manchester.
So how will we capture your beach?
Land.
Land, okay. Okay. Um, I'll, I'm going to move that.
Is water? Okay, um, we got lots to get. I don't have water. Is water part of it? Not land.
Yeah, it's land on water.
You don't. A couple of feet out.
Okay, all in favor of the new buildings, land or infrastructure? It's a six to nothing. Oh, six here, thank you. Okay. Um, are there any other definitions? There is an alphabetizing problem. That's a typo. Long-term care facilities is out of order. Any other, uh, comments on section two? All right, hearing none. Um, section three, uh, districts. Um, I didn't receive any motions, proposed motions to modify that.
Well, long term is under the sub thing of senior housing. I don't think it's in the right spot.
It needs to be invented.
It's been done on the copy I have.
All right.
Three forty-three. It's the copy.
Well, okay, yes, but, um.
So they're alphabetized under senior housing.
No, we have, we have it in two places.
Yeah, two seventy-six.
All right, let's strike the two seventy-six.
Yeah.
Um, cause, uh, two seven, line two seventy-six. Yeah. Okay, so that brings us to section four. Um, the use table. Well. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
So long-term care facility can be. Um, home for the age of, but it could be a hospital, it could be a sanitarium. So they're not all senior housing related, long-term care facility. That's why it was separate.
Uh, because not always senior. Okay. Right, could be for.
Catch, another good catch.
Yeah.
Back in.
Flash over.
And put it in the right alphabetizing. Okay, thank you. So everybody should change their footer to, or it should be article one. Hold the footer. Maybe you're.
I'm looking at my.
Okay, so, um, now we're to section four. Um, and I had a couple of, um. Section C. Where's, uh. We don't have a number three. We should just renumber four to three. Easy. And then, um, the raising or keeping of livestock and poaching poultry, horses or cows regulated by the health. And this is exactly what our current bylaw has. However, the, I believe the board of health regulation is. More than six poultry. More than twelve poultry.
What number?
Twelve. Well, so I think we should make this consistent with the board of health. Because poultry.
Why even say?
Chickens. Because you have to have, if you have more than twelve, you need a special permit.
No, what I'm saying is if you just say including more than poultry horses. Why do we use?
More than the number.
Exceeding.
Exceeding. Exceeding those regulated.
I mean, this has recently, you could have six horses.
Sarah, I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, the board of health just had a meeting on this recently and they changed some of it, so. Um, just to let you know, they've, they've modified that recently.
Let's just make it consistent with the board of health. I'll say what the numbers are.
Becky, was it adopted immediately?
I don't know, because I had to go to, uh, select board meeting. I don't know, because I had to go to, uh, select board meeting, so I, but they, they definitely, they were changing, um.
Chickens?
Component, various components, numbers and types.
Okay, so how do we make this so that if you are? If you're subject to the board of health, it's a special.
So I was gonna say, I don't think this should be planning board at all. I think this should be BOH, all of them. We're not really involved. Yeah, which doesn't really do zoning bylaws, though, so maybe this shouldn't even be in.
So we currently.
How do we respond?
We currently have this in our current. Bylaws.
And raising animal with the land use. Raising animals with the land use. So that's what it would make sense to have it here. So it's in the general bylaw, I think that. Raising of animals. So we don't require any amount of, certain amount of land or.
Right, it just says as regulated by the board of health. What else does it need to say?
I think we just say BOH.
So, Chris, like, BOH across the board.
They say keeping your livestock, uh, as regulated by the board of health.
Which it says already. So I think Christina's point is in all. But you put BOH as the. Uh, BOH rather than.
And is that a special permit, though? That's a special permit.
No, or we could just say, right, we can add BOH, BOH regulations up in the, up in the. C point four.
We're just making a note.
We have nothing to do with it.
Okay, so, so we'll just make a note. That it's regulated by the board of health. Okay? Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put.
Put there, planning board or B?
I'm gonna put BOH. And then I'm gonna put up in the notes of above. Um.
Regulated.
BOH. Indicates. See board of health regulations. See.
Is this gonna be the only BOH then?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm trying not to change. I'm trying to make.
I'm understanding that we're changing it.
C point four. Well, right now, it's a special permit by the planning board, so it is changing it.
But you're trying to make it not a special permit by the planning board.
Right. Currently, we, we just took the existing stuff and.
Yeah.
Put it in, into this table without making change in it.
Yeah.
So. But I think that this is a, I would say.
Okay.
So, um, do I have a motion to change it to board of health, BOH, instead of planning board? Um, across the board, except for in, uh. Because across all of them, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, because we have limited commercial, you know, and we have a.
Not an LCD, okay.
Well, we have it up there. I mean, there's a cattle, right?
Right.
The reason keeping of.
Yeah.
Dogs, so.
It should be BOH, not.
Right.
Right, BOH, and then up above the note, will we say BOH indicates C board of health regulations?
Um, Sarah?
Yes.
I, I, I think, I, I know that they regulate, um, poultry and things, but I don't know as they regulate livestock. I, I just wonder if you're making a.
So if they're not.
I'm sorry.
They do.
They do. Okay, we don't need to all regulate the same thing. Okay. Um.
But it, but it, while they regulate them, you, I think it's, there's a still reason to, to say that it's allowed, but whatever.
Yeah. Okay, I think we now do that. Um, okay, and then, um, other, two other notes I had, that. Do we need to take a vote on that one? I think we should.
That was Christina's motion, and then, did you make that motion? On the BOH thing?
I think Sarah brought it up.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to change it to board of health. Do I have a second?
Right down.
Second.
Okay, Ron is second. Um, any other discussion? All in favor? I, six, uh, six voting, yes. Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, and my, my only concern with that is that, so currently we have no for G and the LCD, even though there is a. So we're gonna say. So you take here in the LCD, but I would assume the board of health in the general district is no, you can't have cows and stuff like that, so that whatever.
Right. Okay, then the other, um, so we're gonna also remember that. The other question that I had, just to check. Is that in the LCD, in that same page? Community uses charitable, number six, we have no in the limited commercial district? We, it's a charitable or philanthropic use hospital nursing care facilities, that should be a PB, correct?
In the commercial? No, it's not allowed now. We're just changing what's here, right? Yeah, it's not allowed, no.
It's not allowed now. Okay, so keep no. Where? Sorry, I'm sorry.
No.
Um.
E six.
Community facilities.
Philanthropic use.
Used hospital nursing care facilities and sanitarium. Uh, we have no, okay. And then in the senior housing. We actually, the, that motion has to change that.
Yeah.
Okay, got it, just making sure. Uh, and a cemetery is not allowed in the LCD. And public utilities or commu, public communications building. Not allowed. So those are correct? Okay, great. Um.
Um, I think, just one thing to go back on, municipal uses including parks, playgrounds, senior center, this is all defined here.
Okay.
Um, sewage lift stations, related parking facilities. And I think we were silent, we just said yes across the board.
Mm-hmm.
Um. I think that related back to, like. I think I raised concerns and he said, at least Bobrowski said that we can't. Restrict.
No, I think.
Said we could, and we were at the time saying, hey. It's, it's fine, it's fine. I'm just concerned that we say yes and we give our review rights away. Oh, that, yeah, so, um, well. But you, municipal uses kind of supersede the planning board, right? But I remember the.
We should conversation.
Still do with like plan review or whatever, was the salt storage. I mean, I think that was the example, do you want a salt pile on the corner of your property anywhere and everywhere without any kind of. Say, and we just kind of skipped over that one quickly and people were like, yep, 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 fine. So I'm just a little concerned about that one personally. This one was not transposing, this one we. Discussed and put that in there because it was silent.
That predates me, so I, I don't have knowledge about the conversation.
Um, I agree with the concern and I also agree with, um. How it impacts what we've just been discussing, protecting our water supply, et cetera, et cetera, so we will have town land near. Water.
But all wa, but those other rules would, if the use is in, is one of the regulated, um. You know, uh. If it has, if it has drainage or, um, is in the water supply district. Them, or involved. If it triggered one of those uses, it would require a special permit.
I. Says yes right now, I know, we, so it should almost be yes slash planning board or yes slash. Planning board? If we're doing a site plan review, I'm just saying, yeah, so if it needed something, it should say it.
Triggered by a certain size and requiring special permit review?
Maybe the size, special.
Do you remember some conversation with it? About it? What do we have now? I think we're, again, we're trying to mirror the thing, uh. I, I understand recollection of the silence.
Sarah?
Yes?
So, by saying it's allowed does not, as you're, as you noted, does not take away. Any of the regulations that go with that, so just like the plant, just like the playing field that's being considered on Pine Street. Because it has over ten parking spaces, it goes before the planning board for special permit. So this table is not meant to, to capture everything that it may need under every circumstances. This table is just saying. It's allowed either by right or special permit, um, and then. The rest of the regulations stand for itself, so.
Where are these regulations now? Because we've replaced so much with the table, where is that regulation?
They're in section six.
Yeah.
To the parking. Parking, section five would be parking. So just to, to clarify that the, um, current use regulations that we have in single residential districts. Are municipal parks, playgrounds, non-municipal recreation facilities, et cetera, the exact same wording. The general district allows municipal and utility uses. Um, and I suspect if I go further, municipal uses are allowed in the LCD. So I think the intent of mirroring our existing uses is achieved now, um, maybe.
When you say yes, by right.
Correct, so that's.
That's kind of not by right, but.
If it's required a special permit. By right doesn't really.
But it would require a special permit under a different provision.
Right, if there's, if there's, if it's in the water resource. Farm water, if it's earth removal.
I see the connection.
Yeah.
He was saying at that point that, yes, our language is not specific enough, right? He's like, do you really want a salt pile? On your corner, like, I mean. And that was the example, right? Something like that, something, I mean, he was the one who brought concern up about it.
So it's mirroring our current bylaw. I mean, the other thing is we could just put, yes, planning board if we wanted to. I mean, I feel like municipal uses are gonna get a lot of scrutiny.
Yeah.
Elsewhere in town.
Exactly, I don't think they're gonna put a salt pile on.
Right. Um. Does somebody want to make a motion, or do we want to leave it as is? I just wanted to bring it up before.
Okay.
Hearing no motions, I'm gonna move along. Um, the other one, um. That, uh, had come up.
You have the bullet.
Uh, delete, um, note three. Um, delete B, uh, delete bullet. It's on page nineteen. Uh, the E is redundant with B. We can just, yeah.
No, it isn't. A resulting structure harmony. Is not the same as appropriate terms of bulk shape location of the lot in relation to.
Butting property. That was just input I got from.
Yeah, it, it is, it says within the general, immediate and general area, so.
Very subjective.
Trying to simplify, but.
Define harmony.
You're saying, shouldn't we be deleting E then, which has?
Delete E.
Yes.
Sorry, others think delete B, no.
E is within B.
E is within B. I, I agree. I thought we were deleting B, sorry.
Any objections to deleting E?
Um. Is appropriate the same as in harmony with?
I don't think so.
I just feel like deleting something right now, after we've looked at this and it's been like this for years.
I don't have a strong feeling. Well, I think just, uh. Appropriate in terms of all those things that qualify it is an easier thing to, to measure, to measure and. E is objective. Than saying something is in harmony, which is pretty difficult to.
Absolutely, beholden.
Right, yeah. In harmony. So.
I think B is actually quite good.
B is stronger. That's why I was objecting, deleting B, when I was mistaken. All right, so, I mean.
I'll take a motion to delete.
We can say appropriate and in harmony, if that makes people.
I like that. I like the word harmony.
Appropriate and in harmony and appropriate.
This is Sarah Melish. The in harmony is part of the state code.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Okay. Let's just leave it then.
Thank you.
Let's leave it, all right. That, that's just.
I mean, unless you made your typos, we've, like, said.
Yeah, okay.
It's from.
Don't delete that, no. So we're not, uh, Sue and Gail, there was no motion on deleting E. Okay, um. Note, um. Um. And swimming pools, um. So in talking with Sarah Melish. She suggested on section four point three point three. That one of the, that an additional, um. Uh. Requirement for a. Swimming pool permit. Would be written confirmation that all abutters to the property have seen the proposed plan and have waived the special permit review. Um, because her feeling is that a lot of the, the, um. Concerns that happen with the swimming pools are simply that the abutters haven't seen the plans and they want to see them and have the opportunity to have. Input, and so if they, but oftentimes they come and they have, actually, they say, well, they don't have problem with us. So, um, she thought, well, we could save a lot of. Time. By. Asking that they be given the opportunity to waive the special permit, and if they're not willing to do that, then it does go to the ZBA.
You have a, your definition of a butters.
Right, we talked about that. We said direct abutters was what we, we talked about with her. We didn't talk about them.
Can we write the word? Can we write the word direct?
Correct. So my other question on that is, so the butters list is gonna have Mr. and Mrs. or whoever it's on there. Do we want every person that's on the list? I mean, if people are in the middle of a nasty contentious divorce, I mean, I think every person on that list has got to sign this. You just can't have one person.
So, and so this raises another problem too, which is what if somebody's in Florida for the summer?
They'll get their mail forward.
But they, maybe you can comment. I think if you're asking for a waiver, then someone could feel pressure to sign that they, that's different from being invited to a public hearing. To speak in front of a board. And I don't think that we ought to start making these sort of partial exceptions, either it gets a special permit hearing or it doesn't. But asking for people to sign away their. Their permission via waiver, I think is problematic. As an abutter, you might feel some pressure or some.
Mm-hmm.
Some reason why you might say something differently.
So what we're saying now is you can do it by right. Is what the.
Is what the proposal is, which is different than, which is a change from the current.
Current is special permit and you have appeal, you have an appeal process.
Right.
So this is Sarah Melish. My suggestion was not that you ask them to waive their right. To a special permit, but they've seen the, the plans and they agree to the project. That's a different standard.
So Sarah, what's your thoughts on? Who has to say?
The, only the, only the direct abutters, not everyone on the abutters list.
So if it's Mr. and Mrs. or Mrs. and Mrs., whoever it is, both people need to sign?
Right.
Okay.
So, you know, if they're a direct butter, they see the darn pool. We've had only one pool before us. Where anyone raised a question and it happened to be a butter and they hadn't shown the plans in advance. And so it came before it was contentious in the ZBA, but once they understood what they were doing. They were able to modify the plans to, to meet the needs of the abutter, and that's what we're trying to do, is say, go to your butters first, don't ask ZBA to. To mediate your disputes, and if you have a dispute, then you come before us.
So Sarah, what? I'm just thinking, worst case scenario. So what if someone illegally signed for someone? What would that person's recourse be then?
It would have to be an appeal of the building.
Okay, I'm just thinking out loud, sorry.
Appeal of an administrative decision, which we hate, but that's what it would be.
Okay, so I, I want to change the language a little bit. Sarah, see if this sounds right. Written confirmation that all director butters to the property have seen the proposed plan and do not object to the project.
Yep, that's fine.
So can somebody just walk me through the process? Who, who pulls the abutter list and who sends it?
It would be part of the application for the building permit, that the building department would have some type of form. That the applicant would get all of the abutters to sign and submit it as part of the building permit.
But does that form have direct versus a but, versus non-direct?
Well, we'd have to put it that, make it that way. It's a new form.
Oh, new form.
Yeah. Doesn't exist today, but I, I, I think that would alleviate the concerns of people in town who don't want things by right. And we receive an application for swimming pool about once a month.
Okay.
It's pretty obvious.
Yeah, direct abutters are pretty obvious.
Everyone regulars enjoying the property or across.
You can go on Patriot Properties, you can find your direct abutters.
But not diagonal. Not like bingo.
Okay, so Chris has made a motion, I think, right?
Yes.
To add G under section four point three point three. That, uh, to say.
Confirmation that all director butters to the property have seen the proposed plan and do not object to the project.
Okay, um, I'll second, oh, I'll second that. There's seconding that, Mary has a comment, yes?
So what if, okay, what's, just as an example, what if there's five abutters and four sign and one does not? To the ZBA?
Yeah.
Does it say that in here?
I'm just looking to see.
On anything else where we have this sort of trigger for things to go to the special permit? I just worry about precedent.
Be a good precedent.
Sarah, I would just like to know that the building inspector and the building department or wherever all these other things fall are. You know. Primed and ready to go if these things pass and all of this. Capholding is in place that. You know, there's a new form, there's a, you know, I don't know that, it's not our purview, but who's, who's getting this new form? Who's passing all this stuff off to the building inspector in his department? Do we have the staff for it? Do we have the time?
Well, you figure it right now, if I, if most people probably go to the building inspector to buy, to say, what do I need to do to be? To do a spill, a swimming pool, is my guess, I, my guess is that they start there. And he says. You gotta have a special permit, you have to go through to the ZBA, so they're already, my assumption. I may be wrong, but unless they've done it before, they've got a contractor who's doing it, there, that they probably start with the building inspector anyway to talk about. Their pool. And then, so now he's gonna say, fill out this form that has these A through G. And come back with your plan and I'll assess it, evaluate it.
Yeah, I understand that, I'm just more, you know, it's the devil's in the details, who's designing the form and who's giving it to the building inspector.
I think maybe Sue and Bill and the building inspector would. Put it together and.
I think we're introducing gray area, I think something's either by right or it's a special permit. And you just go through the process and it doesn't have to be cumbersome. But this thing that's like.
Goes to the special permit is cumbersome.
Well, then why, then what's the concern about having a swimming, I mean, if there's a concern about having swimming pools by right? And we're trying to address that, should they be by special permit? I don't know, I mean, it just feels like we're carving this up. Why is a special permit for something like this cumbersome?
Sarah Melish, why is a special permit for swimming pools cumbersome? Yeah, I think it takes up a lot of time.
And, and have you ever gotten a special permit? They're not easy to get, I've got one, several too, and they're. You know, they take buns, they cost money, you gotta notify all the butters, go to a hearing, sometimes you have to hire a lawyer.
I, I guess in the case of the swimming pools, the ZBA, right, wrong, or indifferent, has not denied any. Her, her advice is that we always pass them, provided they meet the other requirements. And that the only issue we ever have is that the abutters haven't seen the plan.
I just want to voice the concern and, and I'm fine with all that, my only concern is that we're taking it away from the CBA. Cause it's cumbersome and we're putting this all on the building inspector who works ten hours a week, so. You know, we're just kind of shifting the, the workload and. That may sound good, but you know, I, I just don't know that we have the.
All we're saying is if they don't meet all the requirements of the by right, it automatically goes to a special.
Right.
And the building inspector can have a checkoff sheet of understanding those conditions for the by right. As part of the permit, and if they don't meet it, it comes to ZBA. He does that all the time.
So this is just a condition.
Sort of what he already does, it's that he's, he, it already, they all go there. Okay, we have a motion on the floor, any other discussion on the motion?
Chris, you want to?
Yes, the motion is to add G, written confirmation. That all direct abutters to the property have seen the proposed plan. And do not object to the project.
That's written confirmation, we see their signatures.
I think the form, there's going to be a form. Okay. Yes, is that you, Sue?
Yes. Um, I just, I really think that you are getting into some gray, some gray area here, so I would just recommend that you pass this particular. Um, one by the town attorney.
They're all gonna go to the town attorney, that's what we're trying to get through tonight.
Alright, well, I'm flagging.
Okay, thank you, good, good, that will be good check.
Sarah, have you seen this anywhere else, Sarah Melish?
Um, what we're hearing is that a majority of towns do not require a special permit for a swimming pool.
Okay, great.
And so what we're trying to do is to. Kind of give the option that it can go to a special permit if, if a butter, direct abutters have an issue. So we don't, that we're not accused of taking away that right.
Okay. Um, uh, all in favor of Chris's motion? Raise your hand. Opposed, okay, passes five to one. Great, thank you. Okay. So we are now done with what is Article One with those changes which are quite modest, so I think. We will. We will make the changes. In track changes and put them on this website. On, on our, we will put, I will show, I will direct you to where they are. But with, with track changes, we will accept them to send them to town council, but we will leave the track changes version so we can all see it. Okay?
Can we get this out this?
Yes, we can get this out this week, to this one. And I think we can get adult entertainment out and a couple of the other ones, so let's see, so. Article number two. Article number two is the general motions to change the general bylaws, let's skip over that for a minute. And let's go to, um, what is? It used to be called Article Number Five, it's now Article Three, which is, no, sorry. Article Five, which is now, uh, was Article Seven, it's now Article Five, and it's to amend section twelve. Okay? Action, uh, so. Motion for. So, uh, everybody know where we are, section twelve administration, so we are moving. Uh, deleting section seven and adding a new section twelve administration. And these are in this order, we can talk about this some other time, but. I wanted to make sure that if we had any of these fail, that the others would stand alone, and that's why the order is maybe. Somebody, we can think through that again some other time, but that's why they're not, that's why they're in this little bit bizarre order. So, um, section, uh, twelve. Has a number of proposed motions here, and they mostly are to add climate resilience and adapt, adaptation in a number of places. So the first one is in section twelve point five point two. Where did that last time? We agree, all agreed to that last time. Section twelve point five point two. To add eight. To replace eight and insert climate resilience and adaptation in advance of the current eight and renumber eight to nine.
So you want to get rid of eight?
No, no, we're renumbering eight to nine.
So I ask the overarching question then, I obviously know what climate resiliency and adaptation is. How does this specifically translate when reviewing special permits? If you don't have climate resiliency and adaptation guidelines.
Well, so I think. I would say two things, one is we could put climate resilience adaptation guidelines on our future list of things to work on and be specific. But there is also some common sense things, which is the flood maps that are readily available from FEMA that show. The new hundred year storm, and so for example, if you were going to, uh, increase, um. Impervious surface in areas where there was a hundred year storm, I think you could say you were increasing the runoff and thus. Potentially increasing the effect of that hundred year storm. Um, or even a five hundred years, or the seven, the twenty seventy flood, um, high tide or any of those things. I mean, there's a fairly big body of literature on, on this, so I think it's, um.
But I don't know what teeth it has right now, we don't have anything.
So I guess the question is. Why would we leave it out even if it's somewhat subjective, because it's a very important issue for our, for our town?
And I agree a thousand percent, but it is very subjective, so.
Can I respond? It is, um, doesn't need to be subjective, there are best practices around. Um, and, and there is some overlap, you know, stormwater management, but flood control amount. For where we are, uh, the reduction of, of water runoff from the site, um, so there are flood issues, there's heat issues. And how much, um, not just impervious cover, but you know, how much vegetation, where's the vegetation? Is it on the places where, um, we want pedestrian traffic to be, um, so it's thinking about. Uh, kind of public accommodations for, uh, resiliency, making. Comfortable and safe environments, and then also thinking about, um, you know, depending on where you are. Like the sea level rise, it might be flooding, it might be, um, stormwater runoff. Uh, some of those issues as well, so I think you can make that broad statement and look for the best practices. And demand them in site plan review, and then we can follow along with specific, site specific, you know, kind of.
I, I mean. Saying we need the best practices somewhere that somebody can refer to them and say, okay, this is what I will be up against.
The best practices are industry best practices.
But then we have to note that, I'm just saying, like, I, you know. I'm not arguing the point that we should have it and it's necessary, I just don't, I mean, these are just now thrown in there. And we have nothing.
Well, I think I didn't, um, I mean, I put it in there in a general way, but there was another clause in a different section. I think where I get into best practices and. So we did modify, um, section six last time to add resilience principles and best practices to protect. Protect human environmental health and, um. Resilience practices, we, we added it a couple of places. I mean, I agree with Laura, I agree with both of you that, you know, sometimes these subjective things are a little bit challenging. But it's a good place to start, and let me give you one example. Um, if we had site plan review, I'm working on a project right now where the sea level rise is predicted to be at eighteen feet. And the architect came in with the first floor level at seventeen feet and, and we're the owner, we said, no, raise it to eighteen feet. I mean, it's just sort of a common sense thing, right? You have, it's a, it's a sea level community and the architect. Just came in what looked good, and we said, no, you have to raise this, I mean, it's a different process, we're the owner, but, but.
And we may develop certain. Right, certain, certain thresholds, right, such as, you know, if sea level rise is projected eighteen feet, then you need nineteen or twenty. You need some sort of, sort of on a free board, right? Set those conditions in.
Yeah, I mean, the architects, we're just gonna wet, right, wet flood proof, but it's ridiculous, but anyway. But it's an example of like a common sense thing, if, if you know, if this is a, a hurricane prone area. You have the models that show this fifty year building, why wouldn't you, kind of thing, and, and, and. Everybody kind of agreed, it's like, it, it's a trigger to set, to begin the conversation. I don't think it's, um.
We can expand it if it helps to say, as we did in the other clause, to say hu, to protect human and environmental health. You know, that, if you feel like that's doing anything for you, but I think it's similar to impacts on the natural environment, you have to get down to the. Specifics when you're reviewing a plan about how you're gonna mitigate or protect against effects on a natural environment. But I don't think it's a subjective thing, I think it's just a general purpose statement. I mean, I could look at those two different, you know, impacts on the natural environment. You know, you know what's gonna impact that, clear cutting, um, you know, too much impervious, whatever. But climate resiliency and adaptation, I get, I mean, again, obviously I know what it is. I. Don't necessarily know yet how it equates to what we would do in a special permit.
I think what it's saying is that it needs to be considered while you're doing the review. You may not agree as to what the, whether or not it complies, but needs to be considered.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just putting on the applicant hat, so I'm saying, you know, I, if I, I wouldn't know what it means.
So if someone wanted to develop housing in the town hall lot, and we all thought that was a good idea, and they came in with housing. And they had. The elevation of the first floor was set at the grade of the grand lot, right? And we know that that's gonna flood, so we would say, that's not gonna work, if you wanna do, but with housing, assuming we all agree, that's a good use for that space. Then we would say, your housing, your flood level needs to be at, you know, harbor plus ten or whatever we set it at. And so I think by making that broad statement, we can get to what the specifics are for any particular site. It's also, and we can, we can require the environmental, um, impact reports and the hydrologic studies and all that, that will demonstrate that to us. But to make a general statement that we expect you to. Um, consider climate resiliency and be responsive to what it's gonna take to protect human and environmental health. I think that's the sort of purpose statement we're trying to make here. And I agree that there's work to be done, I think it's work that we. You know, we're hoping we can get to with more clarity, so. Um, okay, any other conversations, I, I'll make a motion, or Laura has made a motion, I guess I'm gonna say, cause she, that was your suggestion. To add number eight and renumber number nine to add eight climate resilience and adaptation to twelve point five point two criteria.
So I think number one, do we change that to six point three?
Very.
Same section. Standard set four.
Oh, yeah. Not on that one yet, but we're on, um, we're on most, the, the first one to add, to add in number eight. Climate resilience and adaptation in line. Mark my line one oh five on page three.
You're just skipping to something else?
I think you skipped to the next one.
She's just doing a rough, so, yeah.
You're about to come to that next one, so, um, any other discussion?
One twelve five two, no?
Yep, and we're gonna add it.
So in twelve five two, number one needs to be changed.
Oh, yes, thank you, sorry.
What's number one?
Twelve point.
Same way we're in this section. And in the paragraph above it also mentions.
No, it is, it is six point two is correct, those are the, so six, so section twelve is the administrative things. Six point two are the special permit performance requirements. I believe that standards set fourth and six point two is correct.
Six point two assigns, six point two is signed. It's six point three, okay.
I thought you were saying it's both, no, six point three, thank you for persevering there, good. Uh, Sue, can we do a search on the entire thing on that question, cause I, six point, make sure we didn't. Uh, do, just do a search or replace for six point two, I'm looking at it again on page five. Performance standards of six point three. In this section, we need to search for six point two.
Yes.
And make sure that we have the right sections.
Yeah, I think that's another search.
Yeah.
Cause, um, sometimes we use special permit granting authority lowercase, sometimes it's SPGA uppercase. Sometimes it's special granting authority, uppercase. It's just kind of all over the board. It's just kind of all over the board.
Yep. I'm going to add that in with Board of Selectmen. Select Board Inspector Buildings, Building Inspector. He, to he, she, and SPGA. Let's just standardize that. And we're going to search for 6.3, 6.2. Make sure we search.
And what should it be?
So Sarah, while you're, while you're, while you're mentioning that
Yep.
The building inspector's actual title is Inspector of Buildings. We went through this when we first began.
Okay, so maybe we just make sure that it's properly done throughout. On that swimming pool one, let's make sure we've got that correct. Okay.
Do we, we only did, are we changing it to special permit granting authority caps?
Well, that may be the context that it's used in. Sometimes if you're talking about just the special permit granting authority shell. It may not be, but I don't, it says, well, however you all want it to be.
Table, I think.
They should be all in caps.
But SPGA. First, first Yeah, okay, that's fine. Yep. Okay, back to the motion that Laura has made to add climate resilience and adaptation. Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, six to nothing. Great, thank you, Laura. The next one is six, 12, 6.2 says any vegetation. So the applicability, any site development, number two. Any site development which involves cutting or removing vegetation shall be permitted only on so that seems kind of, if you're going to just cut down a bush. Do you So the question is any site development which involves cutting or removing of any amount, what, there's going to be some trigger, right?
I think we already have a trigger now.
While we're here. I think our removal, we could say mature vegetation. Or we can say trees. So we, I mean
Taller than six feet?
I mean, how, what about the C Street site?
I think that real vegetation may also be getting into, you know, if you have slopes and you're
Yeah, the topography changes.
Topography and We could say woody vegetation. You want to be technical about it? That means not